Just logging in guys, we'll start in two secs.
Whoa.
This is intentional.
Okay.
Hey, call the meeting to order, nine thirty, October eleventh, it's a Tuesday, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Attendance at the start of the meeting is a hundred percent with Council Vermaatski being virtual. Council Mercado, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, sure, that, yeah, I can do that, I have it right in front of me, so don't have to put it up on the screen, that the October eleventh, twenty twenty-two agenda be adopted as presented.
Awesome, I will call for that vote. I don't have our paddles, yeah, so.
Oh geez.
That's all.
Fine.
I didn't see.
Do we go like this for no?
Yes.
And Shelley, Shelley, do you want her to go in the chats?
Yes.
In the chat, they wanted Shelley, but she did ever end up, so that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so we do have an appointment, we have Randy Black from the seniors committee, but I hear. Right, you want to speak during the presentation as part of the group.
So my understanding was I'm here more to provide commentary when asked.
Commentary when asked, alright.
You're my wife, selling my wife. Do you permission? Yes.
From there.
Unravel that too.
Okay, so I need a motion. Up the minutes from September twelfth, as long as you're good, Natalie?
The standing committee of the whole meeting minutes is September twelfth, twenty twenty-two be adopted as presented.
Thank you, call for the vote. Oh, now we have our paddles.
What's that game you?
And Shelley said, yes, so that's unanimous. Okay, now we're on to the advisory committee review, and Diana, you doing the presentation?
I am.
Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, everyone, um, today we have with us Randy Black, uh, he is the chair of the seniors advisory committee. As well, we have online, we have Suti Makotia, who is the vice chair of the youth advisory committee. As well as we have Elizabeth Wilkie, director of community services, and we have Mike Erickson, director of backend development with us today. So I'm going to do a brief kind of summary of the report high level, and then we'll just get ready for questions and discussion or comments. Uh, so on April eleventh, twenty twenty-two, committee, the whole meeting, council provided feedback and comments on the advisory committees' functions and mandates. So through that review and feedback and discussion, administration summarized the following, that advisory communities are valuable. They provide an opportunity for residents to weigh in on communities' issues and programs, and overall committees have added value to council decision-making. Council generally agreed that committees with a predefined role such as reviewing grants, providing feedback or recommendations on programs, or who serve as a liaison between city council and the community are very valuable. Generally, there was support to continue, um, continuation in the same format as we currently have for the arts development advisory committee, the community services advisory committee. The environment advisory committee, as well as the policing committee in their current format and mandate. There is an attachment in the report about, um, the advisory committee review that has some comments, um, and input and feedback from all council that's in there as well. But based on this feedback discussion today, we're going to focus on the changes to the economic advisory, um, economic sustainability advisory board. And the seniors advisory committee and advisory committee. So, um, there also is an attachment in your agenda report entitled Economic Development Advisory Board Modernization. Which provides information and background on this committee and the recommendation that we're putting forward today. That we suggest disbanding the SAB and replacing the committee with an establishment of a regular business forum. The intent of the business forum is by council and administration, the opportunity to hear from a board spectrum. A broad spectrum of St. Albert business community on targeted local businesses and economic development topics identified by council and administration. The other two committees we will have a chance to talk about today are the youth and the seniors advisory committee. So both of these committees have struggled with the defined role or specific tasks, and have been challenged in maintaining a clear purpose mandate and deliverables. At times, the youth advisory committee has experienced challenges with also obtaining quorum. So administration is recommending a suspending recruitment currently of those, um, of those committees, both the youth and the seniors committee. And involving these community members in planning how council can best engage with youth, seniors, and potentially other demographics in the community to improve the function of council advisory mechanisms. Uh, there is an attachment that's included, um, in your report today on the youth and senior committee modernization. Uh, this report provides background on the history of these committees and some of the challenges they faced. This report also provides, um, some alternative engagement and.
Recording and programming and.
And advisory. So the report also includes, um, alternative engagement and advisory options to initiate planning discussions with these committees. So at this point, um, I just want to open it up for questions, comments, again, we have, um, our staff and our board members here as well, um, for any questions that council may have.
Alright. Wes?
Thank you, ma'am, mayor. I just tell you how my vote's gonna go. Can you describe exactly, like, I saw this business thing going. Explain that a little bit better, like, what's the vision for that? Yeah.
I'll hand this over to Mike Erickson, he's, um, going to be able to share his insight on this.
Thank you, Ms. Anger. Um, so I, I think what we, what we discussed is, is we really felt that there was, there was a gap within. Our, our business engagement service levels from a, from a department level. We sort of realized that we, we do some very broad engagement when it comes to things like surveys to, to the businesses here. Um, and we do a lot of individual sort of one-on-one conversations and meetings with, with businesses frequently. What we felt was missing was sort of right in the middle, that sort of medium-sized group to have really. Qualitative conversations and, and discussions. And so we sort of looked at an idea that was maybe a little bit different, a little bit out there, and, and pulled on some of the, um, the comments and things that we heard from the discussion with. With board and some members of council, so to create an opportunity, you know, we threw it out there twice a year, to put. Twenty-five, fifty business people into a room with, uh, members of council if they choose to attend, and some administration. And identify what are the, the most relevant and important topics for, uh, the community, and, and how can we sort of. More clearly lay out those key questions in advance, and that would help sort of determine who the, who the participants might be. Because people might, business people might identify, okay, that's a topic that I have some expertise or some experience. I can contribute, or I, I have some passion when it comes to that particular topic. So, um, the thought is, you know, a couple times a year, we might have an opportunity to get together and have, you know, sort of world cafe style round tables where we could break up different groups. And have really robust, fulsome conversations about whatever those, those, those key topics or, or issues or concerns. Of the day might be. And I think the key component too as part of this is, is there would be a reporting piece, there would be a bit of, um, transparency as part of that, so what was heard would be captured and summarized and provided as. That's a bit of a public report, not, you know, not a four-month date report, but a, a more digestible short report that might just help the, the general public understand. Where those, those business people sort of fell on those, those issues, or some of the comments that came back around those issues and topics.
And I'm just trying to conceptualize this in my mind, because it's, it's, it's clearly not a replacement of, of an advisory committee. It, it, it looks like it's a symposium. For business people within the community, and, and you send a, you recruit based around a particular topic. And then, do we, in. Is, is this an instructional thing, uh, we, we send out papers in advance? And, and then we solicit feedback, is that how this plays out, or?
Um, I, I think it could be, I mean, we haven't fleshed out all the details, I think, I think a good example, I don't know that it would be identical, but a good example would be the, uh. The, the gathering, I don't know what terminology to use, we gather around downtown. It's a good example of putting, you know, forty, fifty people, um, with an interest in that particular topic in a room to discuss certain ideas. And, and part of that is, there's an important, when certain topics come up, I think one of the, the challenges that sometimes we, we felt with, um, ESAB. Is there was a base level of understanding of a certain issue that needed to, to happen, you need to spend sort of, you know, ten, fifteen minutes just making sure that everybody within that, that group or that room. Had a, a base level understanding of the issue in order to provide the best possible feedback and advice. So there would be a component where, you know, you need some background information on that topic, but then really the, the, the key would be to get that information to help us as, as, as an organization. You know, maybe see, sort of, identify some of those blind spots that we don't, we don't see day-to-day through the private sector.
Well, it, it sounds interesting. It, it'll, it'll be interesting to see how it plays out in practice. What, one of the, uh, notes that I saw in the, in the report is that, is that people brought, um, uh, sort of. Own perspective and their own advocacy strategies for a particular outcome. Particularly, you know, for example, uh, perhaps home builders association have a, a certain outcome, and they would, they would see. The advisory committee is an opportunity to influence rather than provide feedback. Do you see this being different?
I, I think that's the hope.
Okay.
Is when you have more, more voices. You get a broader perspective, and there's an opportunity for, um, a few individuals with really strong perspectives, and can be a little bit more vocal in meetings to. Sometimes control or shift where the conversation goes.
Fair enough. Good. Sounds good.
Mike.
Hold on. So I've got, did you have your hand up?
Yes.
No, no, okay. Get the mic.
Go ahead. We'll get to the question. Okay. Just you're at an age now where you forget. So just following up on council broadheads comments, so the intent then, uh, I like the term symposium, because then you add. It's topic-specific as you've identified. But then, so who would be responsible for the follow-up, I know you've identified a public report, comprising feedback and the insights. But that's, I mean. Maybe we're missing an opportunity then, and I'm not saying that the current structure has that, but my. Comment on, I've written it down, is so who would be responsible for organizing and implementing any of the feedback? Or how would that be incorporated so for back to council?
Um, I, I think the, the intention would be to, to be really intentional with, with the topics. And questions that we would bring forward at this event, so that you'd really have a clear objective, we're trying to answer this question, or we're looking for feedback on this particular topic. And so that could be summarized in a report, or it could be very, um, specific and come back, maybe it's, maybe it's an element of a question, uh, or a matter that's coming to council in future months. I think that's kind of the idea is, is to really give us another tool to sort of go, okay, this is, this is what we've heard on this particular topic. You know, it's not all that different than, than how we approach. Many similar topics, we, we're always looking for, that's the nature of, of our work in, in government, is to make sure that we, we have an understanding of, of, you know, sort of the. Public and where they are on certain issues.
So, and why, why do you, did you want to add that?
I, I was just gonna jump in, I think from a, a internal administrative perspective, I, the, the, the answer to your question is it depends on the subject. So there would be an OPI, right, the Office of Primary Interest, or Only Person Interested, depending on you're, you're designated to, to do that specific follow-up, right? In terms of the bespoke issues, I think that. To Mike's point, um, if it's just a meeting to make everybody feel good, it's sort of a waste of time, so I think what you're driving at is there needs to be follow-up in terms of letting people know they were heard in the way ahead. That would be an administrative responsibility, and the, uh, the lead agency would be designated based on this.
And, and it, just to build off of that, and I think where my comment is coming from is. In the comments in the body of the background, or where you've consulted with, um, members, and, you know. Five out of the eight that we consulted with felt that it was important that it actually become a council of, uh, committee. And, you know, these are, you know, I'm, they're all valuable businesses or successful entrepreneurs in our community. And, I mean, I don't want to, I mean, I, I worry that they would feel that their feedback wouldn't be getting, wouldn't be appreciated, wouldn't be utilized. So I'm, I'm, I'm trying to find a balance in the sense of how would we incorporate that any better than what we currently have.
I mean, I, yeah, I think that, that the transparency piece is, is, is one, a, a form of reporting. But I would just say generally, I think that's probably something that we were challenged with on a daily basis, whether, whether we're. In, in administration, I'm sure at the council level that you're challenged with, is there multiple different perspectives on, on every topic, and, um. Is the decision always made to go with the, the majority? Or is it to sort of seek different opinions and, and take that all into consideration as we form decisions? Right, so I think that's, that's, that's an inherent challenge in just about everything that, that we do. Not a direct answer, but I think it gives an idea of where my, my head's at, or. Not a direct answer, but I think it gives an idea of where my head's at.
Yeah, no, and I guess it's an.
I just add to that too. I think the survey was done early on in our conversations here. And I think the main, main piece we took away from the survey was that they really, the business community really want to know, to have conversations with council. But they want to have input that directly goes to council. So this is still an opportunity to do that, just in a little bit of a different format.
And, and I mean, I guess it maybe goes to the bigger question that we have with all of our advisory committees is, is how do we, I mean, I mean, there are recommendations to council. They're not actionable necessarily and, and they're just recommendations. And I think that's probably one of, at the base of some of our issues with the entire advisory committees right now. So anyways, I'm just wanting to hear what you. I understand the challenges, but I'm wondering if there's a way of how do we engage and make it meaningful? And, you know, at least gives us the advice, whether, like you said, whether or not we use it or can use it because of our perspectives, I don't know. But there has to be a process.
Yeah, and I, I think the, I don't know if you're asking for, if that was a comment or a question?
It was more of a, it was more of a comment and I think you, you've identified it in response, but I think I it was more of a closing comment to my question that we need to find a, we need to find a response, a, a method.
Do you want to respond to that, Mike?
Just, just the root of all this is to be purposeful, right? There's, there's no sake in, in putting people together if we don't have a purpose. Right? If there's, if there's no reason to gather people, and I think that was the thought of, you know, instead of meeting ten to a dozen, well, ten or eleven times per year. What if we just met less frequently, but we got more value out of those, those times that we met?
I agree.
Right, Mike?
Yeah, oh, Mike, in the documentation it said that seventy-one percent of the people on that current team wanted to meet five to ten, ten times a year and yet we're proposing going to two meetings a year. There's some disconnect between their feedback and what we're proposing?
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, th- this was a challenging one, just, just knowing that, you know, the feedback that the board provided through that survey and the conversations we had along the way to get to this point prior to with council and just, just the board and, and administration. There's a recognition that the recommendation sort of goes a little bit against that. I think the, the intention was to take elements out of that feedback and, and incorporate that into what we felt was, was a more purposeful approach to, to something that had been in place for, for twenty, twenty-two years.
The, the, the question I guess I have, the burning question is that councils, one of councils' top priorities is business attraction, business development, business retention, assessment, split, tax split. And, and yet I, I feel like meeting twice a year to, to hear back from the business community through this process is, frankly, watering that the importance of hearing from our business community. It, it, it feels like it's watering it down to me. I, I don't know if twice a year is enough to, to hear from. I mean, we hear from them all the time. Can come and talk at any meeting or we have other forums, but I just wonder if we're, we're not keeping enough focus on our, our business community when, when it is such a high priority or, I, I mean, we're gonna talk about it later today and, in our other subjects on the agenda, the importance of attracting business. So is twice a year, even with a targeted forum, enough to to keep that, the, the high priority that I, I think this council has said we need to have a focus on business?
I would say, to answer your question, I would say yes. And to your point that I think there's, there's a, there's a feeling that we spend a lot of time in the, in the engagement area. And so by by trying to, to balance that a little bit better, it frees up more time to, to focus on some of those priorities. And so I think in the report, we, we touched on the, the various groups that we interact with on a regular basis, the, the UDIs and CHBAs and the Chamber of Commerce that we connect with almost on the daily. And, and the one example that I'll, I'll point to is there's an off-site levy infrastructure project working group. That is, that is so specific and focused on one particular issue. I thought that was such a great example of, here's an issue. Let's get private, public working together to address the issues on, on, in this, this area. And so I, I, I sort of feel like there, there's, and touched on this within the report, a bit of a redundancy that we, we kind of continue to talk about a lot of the same issues with all of these different groups. And do we need to have, you know, four or five meetings with various groups on the same issue? Or can we, can we find those areas that are not being addressed through CHB or not being addressed through these other groups? And, and, and work those into these, these forums or symposiums or whatever we want to call them. That was kind of the, the thought.
The, the other concern I had was this falls back to almost like an advisory or an advocacy role, excuse me, it falls back to an advocacy role. We don't take their feedback and, and actually have some tools to, counselor Makai's point, to ensure that it's implemented in, in some way. A, a, other, I think it, we run the risk of going back to some of the things that our other committees are, are struggling with. It's, it's like, oh, we gave you all this good information on, we think we need to have an advertising strategy. You know, huge growth going on in the region. Where, where's the advertising strategy? If, if, if we don't have a way to bring that back to council and say, okay, we need to, I don't know, find some money to support an advertising strategy. It just becomes it, it doesn't fulfill a role. If, if there's no action plan afterwards to actually do something with that good advice. How do you see that? It, it's gotta be, something's gotta be implemented and done differently to your point. Had some other better words around that, but if we don't implement something, we're just, you know, writing a report and it goes on a shelf, I, I would not want to see that as part of whatever this new forum, you know, might be.
Yeah, it's, it's a really good question because I, I, when I think about the work that we do on a regular basis and I'll, I'll, I'll show you an example, but I, I don't envision us asking yes or no questions. I envision us presenting certain ideas and, and using their, the collective knowledge and expertise in the private sector to help us in things that we don't normally think about in our role in the public sector. And an example of that, something I've done for, I guess, close to a decade now is we'll, we'll, we'll see an issue in, in government and we'll come up with it within our own organization. And then we sort of, we sort of vet it through private sector. So I'll call, you know, developer or somebody that I've got a bit of relationship and go, hey, we're thinking about making this regulation change because we think it's going to help us with this, that and the other thing. And they're really good at saying, you're on to something or you know what, you're out to lunch. Because you haven't thought about how that's gonna affect the consumer and, or you haven't thought, thought about how that's gonna affect how we procure that or this industry that we work with. So they're really good at helping you sort of refine a, an idea or a concept. So that's where I see them helping us get to a, a, a better outcome or better solution in the end by helping us consider the things that we don't normally think about day-to-day in our world and, and bringing some of that expertise that we may not have. You know, within our, within our staff.
And the last, last question is, has, has the chamber been asked of kind of this shift? Just even in general sense, would they be supportive of this? And not see it kind of as duplication or have a sense?
So Mark, or sorry, the, the chamber does have a representative on, on ESAB who's, who's been a part of the communication on this. So we've sent out various emails throughout this process, just to let them know what we're trying to do. And then just as recently as, as last week, we've had conversations with the chamber. I think they've got some other ideas about. I don't know, I want to misframe it. So they've got their own ideas about some ways that there could be, you know, additional consultation with them and the city.
Okay. That's generally, they, they would be aware and, and they were proposing this change. And it's not like they're gonna go, hey, nobody asked me. Because I, I've heard that before on other, other items. And we, we want to work with the chamber, so better to ask them in, in advance, even if their response may not totally align with our direction, but.
Right. So through the, the, of advisor, advisory committees, we have not directly sent indication to the chamber saying, do you have an opinion on this?
Think that's something we could accomplish before implementing or?
Absolutely.
But it have value to reach out and at least give them a heads up kind of thing.
Yeah, we, we communicate with them, like I said, almost on the daily. So again, very, very easy for us to do.
Okay.
But, but what I would say, counselors, the chamber's not the only stakeholder in that particular instance, right? I mean, we, they're, they're an important stakeholder with a very significant portion of the population, but they don't represent all of the center of business. So, you know, that's something we'll have to show a little bit. What, what I will tell you specific to the chambers, my last interaction with them. The appetite for engagement with the city was off the charts. Right? As all of you know. So, you know, providing a structured forum that I think provides a wider, I apologize, I'm using my, my old life speak, a wider aperture for, for engagement, I think is, is generally, certainly based on my interactions, considered a positive.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Which goes to maybe one of my questions, Mike, and I'll get to you, Shelley, but this forum, I think we, we would probably have to have reserved seats for like, so you have a core group on ESAB right now represented from the chamber. I can't, I don't even know the makeup, I can't remember, but those same people should all have like personal invites to every one of these forums. Even if it's not a, a topic of interest for them, they need to have a, they need to send somebody, I guess. So I think we should still have that kind of structure that.
Right.
Those. I too was a little bit concerned with just twice a year, but, but I think in four times would probably be good. And then I'm like, maybe a little concerned about budget because those cafes that we run, that we generally hire out are ten, ten-ish, thirteen thousand dollars every time we do. So you're talking about facilitating this yourself or like in-house?
I think we would look at probably having a facilitator. I think there's, it's, it's helpful in my experience to have sort of a separation and sort of somebody that's impartial, but you know what I mean? Somebody just organizing that and to provide the reporting. And that way it's not perceived that, you know, administration is, is affecting the reporting, right?
So that does probably significantly increase the budget ask. So I don't, I don't know if it was in here or financial.
No, there wasn't.
Better. Yeah, exactly. So that, that budget might limit it too, but I do think four. And you're, you would look to council for topics? Because I have a list.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Lakeview for sure. I have, we, we had one of these on Smart Cities a couple of years ago that was fantastic. A marketing campaign, the Lanus Balla, annexation, hydrogen economy, like this, these would be awesome conversations. And I love the, the fact that they're purposeful. So I just feel like there's so much to do. So twice a year is a little concerned about, but I know that's just your recommendation, right? It's not set in stone that it's twice a year?
No, I mean, that's a recommendation. I think that's, they're trying to balance a lot of things, you know, that we did think that there would be some, some costs that probably contained within our budget if we're, we're keeping it, you know, to two sessions. We're not trying to create more work. We're trying to free up some capacity for some of the, the important priorities that were, you know, alluded to earlier. That's, that's part of this too. We feel like we do a lot of engagement and that's a great thing. But we want to find that balance to make sure that we're not spending all of our time in the engagement zone and we're in the execution zone. That's, that's part of it. And, and yeah, I mean, I think the, the one thing we heard from, you know, members of council that attended our ESAB meeting and from board members, there was an appetite for, you know, some discussion with businesses and council in, in both directions. Everybody seemed to be supportive of that idea. So we felt like this was an opportunity to make sure that, that council was at the, the table, you know, in these conversations to, to listen and be part of that, to hear and not be getting it, you know, second-hand through administration. But also be part of the, the, the idea, okay, which, which topics are important? Which ones do we want to discuss? Which, which projects do we want to vet through private sector and just make sure that we're on the right track? You know, we're not missing something that's, that's totally obvious to them and maybe not to us. That was, that was the thought.
Council would be invited, you said. I'm wondering, council, if we should have an appointee for sure, so that we guarantee that somebody is there in case. None of us can attend, but it's important to have someone there. Shelley's got a question.
Well, thank you, Mayor Ferg. Mr. Erickson, you had mentioned that, you know, you're collecting pu- public input on certain views. And with the ESAB, it's kind of a mix of not necessarily St. Albert owners, business owners. I mean, you've got chamber there, you've got different groups, you've got different, you know, people that are interested in developing things and so on. But in your new idea, you're saying you would, you would contact St. Albert business owners. So I'm just wondering if you're, if you're kind of narrowing down the people that you're, you're presenting or discussing with at that stage.
The initial thought was that it would be like, we, we would advertise these so, so you could sign up to attend. But we might also want to have a list of people that we invite, whether it's the chamber, you know, people that have been regularly involved in, in business discussions within the community. Member from NABE or like I can think of a few organizations that we might want to just make sure that they receive an invitation. But we could also sort of advertise these more publicly so that anybody who has an interest in a particular topic, whether it's Lakeview or downtown or whatever the issue, they might go, yeah, I'm willing to commit two to three hours to, to provide my insight because I have a lot of expertise in this area or that area.
Okay. And I just echo, you know, a lot of the comments from all the other counselors, everything that everyone's mentioned, you know, makes good sense. We do have to make sure that we're, we're contacting the right people for it. So I just want to clarify that you just invited St. Albert businesses. So that's it. Thank you.
A question. Okay, so Sheena then Natalie?
I was about twenty minutes before Sheena.
Sorry, just throw something. Go ahead, Natalie.
Yeah, I just have some kind of questions that came up at Youth Advisory Committee meeting. First one is there, are there any issues with extending terms that are ending this year? So for people who are running up on terms, can we just, any concerns with extending terms?
From, well, we can check with legislative services on that. So what we are proposing right is to not add more. But if we can extend the terms so that those that are currently on the committee could continue for the next eight months as they want to. Okay.
I think that will.
If they're expiring and we're not adding. Well, yeah. So there was definitely interest in kind of people who are expiring, they want to stay on. So I definitely would like to do that. I don't know if kind of that's the same kind of sentiment of the seniors committee.
We haven't had that discussion.
Okay.
In committee yet.
Yeah, so maybe the offer might be useful.
And I mean, given the nature of the concerns that we have on the seniors advisory side, I think most of the committee members would say, if we're not going to be polled, then why have the committee?
Yeah.
Why have us on the committee?
Yeah.
And that's ultimately the question.
Yeah.
Now, that, that's why we've, we've brought this forward. You know, why, why is the committee in place?
Yeah.
What's the usefulness of it? So.
No, that's great. I, my, the other kind of comment stemming from the, the meeting last week with the youth committee was they see value in adding members, kind of with the understanding that your role would be to figure out what this looks like. And I think that's a little bit different from seniors because they're okay not having a really defined advocacy role because they're learning tons. Like, I don't think you're learning how like a meeting runs or how minutes work or municipal operations. I don't think, whereas they are learning tons and they see a lot of value. And even looking at their priorities, you know, looking at, they want to do advocacy work with, with mental health, youth mental health. They want to do advocacy work with environmental sustainability kind of stuff. So there's a lot of value that exists that isn't really embedded into the current policy. And so they're okay with adding people because it's just not the same as the seniors advisory committee. Yeah.
If I may, one of the things that we've been very careful about this year with the seniors committee is not to be. Is not to become an advocacy group. Because with due respect to my predecessor, that's what happened last year. And council didn't like it too much, that's the feedback that we received through Counselor Watkins at the time, that. Council did not want us being advocates, they wanted us to give advice when called upon, so we stuck strictly to advisory. But of course, if you don't ask the advice, it produces a different effect called, why are we here? Now, with the youth committee, if there's a way of being able to have them participate. In the formation of a new committee, some kind of other committee that can truly be advisory. Then they get the benefit that they're looking for, as well as I believe council will get the benefit that you're looking for.
And and I think too with um, with seniors. Um, they know how to be advocates, they know they have really great avenues to to advocate for whatever, whereas youth don't have those same. Relationships, the same kind of understanding of the system to to be able to advocate for anything, so it is a little bit different, so. Um, I would certainly propose that the motion be be amended, so. So that we do recruit for the youth advisory, I I don't think there's necessarily value for seniors committee for that and to extend the the memberships.
A question becomes, what is it that we want to do? Those who will continue. On the seniors front, if if it's to help. Legislative services to form a new committee and to provide counsel with value. Then, great, let's put, let's continue with some recruitment if there's benefit with youth, but. From a senior's perspective. I'll I'll say, and I can't represent the entire team, because I've not had conversation with them for three, three and a half, almost four months. Um, I don't think most of them will want to, who are whose terms are ending, will want to reapply.
Yeah.
I mean, the the experience this year has not been positive, so we'll leave it at that.
And Stu T, I don't know if if you're online, but if you are, please interrupt if I'm. I misspoke at all, don't see anything. I know last week she was busy with exams, so.
Do you see her online? She would like to turn her camera on and say anything. I would be welcome to hear that.
So, that's all I have, Mayor.
I'm just, Randy, we've been hearing this conversation about a business forum. What about? I wouldn't call it a seniors forum, you and I have emailed about a diversity. Maybe we'll call it an inclusion forum, and that we specifically have youth, and maybe we just do that twice a year with. With beauty topics to talk about what's going on in the city, would that be a? A better use of your time?
So. Let's take the use of the time thing off this off to the side, I think it's that the individuals are participating want to feel that. They're they're being actively called upon. In my email to you and to Counselor Hughes at Killik, uh, my my comment was a citizens committee. And regardless of who gets included in a citizens committee. Seniors, absolutely, youth, absolutely, marginalized uh, communities within the city. You know, LGBTQ, um, they don't, they do have some representation, but not in this way. Um, so if we can create an inclusion committee that gets drawn upon. To your point about two times per year, my view is that's going to force advocacy, it's going to create advocacy. So if you truly want advisory, three or four times a year, engage and have questions. For that committee to address challenges where the city's looking for input. On whatever, what council's looking for as input, I think that would be very useful. But I think you've you've got to put a group together to put a charter together for that, and working with. With legislative services with Diane and her team, I think would be a great idea, and I think you'd get interest from. Youth, from seniors, and from other parties within the city to put such a committee together. Put a mandate for it together and then. Draw upon it uh later on.
You know, you're up, okay. So, when I look at this, I'm not sure, I'm looking in your direction, in your direction. I guess I'm wondering, is the, are we thinking taking the same pool of people, I'm not opposed to this, just so it's, just have like the ESAB people. Like, as part of the general group, because in my mind, if I think of it beautifully, in an ideal world. You'd have a group of however many people, that's in a world, you'd have like at least two hundred people. And then you would have their demographics and their business experience, for example, and then when you needed to have it, you could say, here's. All the people in the business community, we're going to send out those invites, and we've already got them already pre-agreeing to show up, right? Because I, when you said you want twenty-five to fifty, I thought, like, there's one thing I know about business people is that they're very busy. These are people who do not have spare time, so um, there's always something you have to get done, so you say, can you come and do this? And you think fifty people who are business people are going to come, however many times a year to do this, I think it could be difficult. Um, so are we looking at getting people to kind of pre-agree to do it? I know that this is might be ahead of the game, but we're also talking about disbanding things, so, and then. Taking that out and saying, here's the business people, here's other demographics, we have a fair representation at the table, is that the intention? Or is it just like, we already have people, I don't know, how are you going to find the people to say they're going to agree to it, so that we don't have people that don't show?
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a good question, that's that's one of the the challenges that we've faced in in my time here is. It is a big commitment, I think, and you're right, business people are very busy, so I think we've been challenged with with having. Um, you know, even ESAB boards are regularly attend, so. You know, I I my my hope is that, you know, like, that's why we put this range at twenty-five to fifty people, so that. You know, depending on the topic and the issue, and there would have to be some advertising, and we would have to. Stations, I think we could, we could be, um, you know, tactful in terms of, okay, we know this is a topic that might affect this. Area of the city or this industry of the city, so maybe you want to put together a bit of a list and. Reach out to some of the people in this industry, because it may affect them directly, or they may have some insights, so we'll definitely have to do some work, but I think the thought is. Generally, this is open to. Any business person, even if you live here as a business person and you may work in this in the state of Edmonton, or whether you own a business here. Or you're a Chamber man member or on and on.
So I think that just ideally, regardless of ESAB, like if you get a large pool of people that are pre-committing to saying that if it's available, I might be interested in showing up. It'll be easier, and the larger the pool, the more you're going to be able to pull for different subjects. And then, I understand the twice a year, because. Government moves slow, and so asking people for feedback every three months is going to be like, we actually don't have that many topics that we can. Adjust as quickly as being presented, so I understand you're thinking, here's what we're working on in the next six months. Now we can then respond to it, because we can't respond to it in three weeks, it's just government doesn't work at the speed that business does or average other people. It's just, it's bureaucracy, so I understand that the idea of what you're saying is, if we're actually going to have meaningful conversation and have enough on the table to discuss. We can't be doing it too frequently, otherwise we'll be wasting people's time, and we also won't be able to respond to it in a timely fashion, where they go, we just met with you three months ago. Why hasn't it been done already, right? So I understand that, the other concern I have is I I like the idea of having the independent facilitator. The only weakness I've been seeing with the independent facilitators is that they don't have any background knowledge or all about the city or even how budgets are run or anything. And so they often allow the conversation to go in a in a fashion that is like, I'm going to say that just. Does not have the background knowledge to have a fruitful conversation, sometimes they'll go forward and they'll just say, okay, well, the taxes are low this year, which means they have to hire next year, which is not the relationship. Like, the taxes are higher this year for a variety of reasons, and it isn't because they were low four years ago, so, um. Like, being able to provide some background knowledge to the facilitators and also to people participating before they get there. Saying, here's the topic, here's the background, or just like we're getting. So that way, when you go into it, you're not walking into it with assumptions that are incorrect, at least. And that way, the the conversation becomes a bit more fruitful for the discussion, and we don't allow it to go on a tangent that. Because a facilitator, I find, often doesn't stop them from talking, which is great, because you don't want to have it where people are being impeded. But then they're also allowing it to go off on a tangent, which doesn't help anybody, um, and kind of, and then that time is just kind of wasted, because. People are making, and then continuing on those assumptions, and then it goes forward, so that would be the caution, I would say, that we need to make sure that everybody does agree to do it, does it? And having that larger base, I know that when Chris Schardine was here, he had that idea as well, and he, his idea was fifteen hundred people to draw from. And if we have the demographics from that, then we can pull however many and say, okay, we're offering fifty, and if I have twenty-five, say yes, then we know we've got the numbers, et cetera, right? So that's kind of where I would suggest that that go forward with, um, as relates to the extensions, I think it makes sense to offer the extensions. And if they say yes, great, and if they say no, well, then we'll work with what we've got, um, instead of trying to recruit for more for a very short period of time. Um, I think that that would just be the most effective use of admin's time and everyone else's, people are interested, great, if you're not. It's fine, we'll work with what we've got and then move forward, so and then, so the intention we have is to come back by June with. A plan, right, and then from there, we're going to enact.
As soon as I can clarify, we have a few motions this morning, so one is in specifically to the business forums, so um, Mike has. Put forward, um, disbanding the SAB board and. Um, so specifically around business, so for the youth and seniors committees, what we were proposing today was to have further conversations with both of those committees. So to not do any more recruitment, we could probably just extend those that are currently on it, and the reason why we bring that forward now is because. We were right in the midst of recruiting for our committees, so we didn't want to go and recruit new members for the youth and senior committees. If we were going to make significant changes, so the idea would be is to hold the place, extend them. Potentially look for maybe if the youth want to add new ones, we're open to that, but to really just take those two groups of youth and the seniors. And to have conversations with those groups about how they'd like to see these committees evolve. Bring back, uh, by Q two of twenty twenty-three, the recommendations from those two committees with some new format, either it might be a new policy. Bylaw, it might be, um, some, might be disbanded, one or both, uh, and then bring that forward in Q two of next year.
Is there any intention to pursue the idea of a citizens committee at this time, then, discussing, still discussing the livelihood of the other two?
Yeah.
So, Elizabeth, do you want to speak to some of the discussions, um, that was in the background there?
Yeah, absolutely, so we wanted to start the conversation with the committees with some options, one of which does include a citizen registry. And what that format could look like and how it could be best utilized, and we just felt like the people that were. Currently sitting in the roles on advisory committee would be a really great place to see, like, how would that feel if? If that was the ask to you, and and would you, would you want to be actively involved in in participating in a registry like that? So, um. It's definitely one of the ones that we felt could have the demographic representation from. Um, lived experience neighborhoods that we could pull from to to have world cafes or forums or surveys as required.
Okay. So everything's kind of, everything's kind of, yeah.
Yeah, and any suggestions that Council wanted to bring forward today, we would take those as some conversations to have with the two committees as well?
Yeah. I I think that when it comes forward to this, if we were to do a citizens thing. But on top of giving demographics that we have the representation, right from the city ages, gender, everything you got going on. And then business, business owner, whatever, relationships. And then also give them a list of topics, and say these are the potential topics the next two years that we know of upfront, subject to change, that notice. Which of these are you even interested in? And that way, hopefully, we can actually get people that are actually want to engage. I think that might be, and then also that it'd be like, how long of a commitment are you agreeing to? Right, so that's kind of, that being said, I don't want to interview two hundred fifty people. So we'll have to figure out some other mechanism, and I think that to Ken's point about the process with the forum. Have to have something where it's established, otherwise it will just become. Lost, as they're saying over and over again, so we need to have, even with this thing, something where we have it. Where it comes forward, and there is a deliberate report with deliberate feedbacks across to the committee level, to have that discussion, just that we know what's going on. Terms of reference, kind of thing. Uh, well, yeah, to terms of reference, but then also after they meet, we get a report that says this is what came out of it, or it will be coming forward in this. This agenda item, right, you see what I'm saying, and that way we don't lose it. So I'm going to talk about it now, I'm going to stop. I don't need a report, so I'll be there. Can't wait for this, I think they're going to be good.
Just so we we all remember, and so the public knows.
And and Randy, just a question for you personally, are you going to stick around and then help design the future of of?
If I'm being asked to, yes.
I'm asking. Because that way, I know then that the citizen committee will be a part of the conversation, because it's something you've talked about. That's good.
Yeah, you want to pull on somebody's passion, that's the right thing to do, so thank you.
Can I, can I comment, Stu T's here?
Yes, Stu T, did you want to add anything? Just put your hand up or unmute and speak, whatever you need.
Oh, you're muted.
Still muted. She not unmute herself without being asked permission?
Renee, as a host, you can unmute her.
No.
That's weird. Stu T, you can nod, is what, did what I say make sense?
Oh, oh, you did.
Okay.
She unmuted for.
Unmuted for a second.
You can also put in the chat, if you want to.
If you press your spacebar, does it unmute you, just hold down your spacebar? Oh, phones tricky.
Okay. Thumbs up, Stu T's, okay.
I think ma- mayor, so I just want to comment to the the citizens forum is really tricky for young people, you imagine a fourteen-year-old. How confident they would be in asking questions in a group of. Us. I.
Agreed.
You would not get the same feedback as in a group of peers, so just throwing that out there, is that, you agree with that, Stu T? Yes, okay.
I, but I do think that the facilitators, they draw it out of you, if they're really good, they they ask for it, and because they're nonjudgmental. I think that there's still ability for them to be. Yeah, and there's still ability to do that and have youth involved with that and keep a youth committee, if that's where we end up going, right? Okay, I'm, anyone else, any more questions on ESAB or the youth or seniors committee? Or any of the other committees?
I see Natalie's put in a new motion on the floor.
Of a motion?
Yeah, it's a little bit different.
How is it different?
So just saying that existing members will be offered an extension if their terms are ending this year, and then just saying for recruitment, and I can take off seniors committee if.
We can split the two if you'd rather.
Yeah, like, I I don't have a strong opinion about seniors, because I didn't talk to the seniors committee about this, but I talked to the youth. Just to say that that recruitment still is valuable, if we're explicit about your job really is going to be figuring out what the future is.
Okay.
I'm okay taking.
Those four motions.
Sure.
Let's do them one at a time.
Okay.
Okay, so let's read the first one.
That ESAB be disbanded and been created a business forum.
All right, accept that motion. Does anyone else have any comments before we go to the vote? Okay, she says, I think it's hard for most youths to even speak up in class. And I would consider teachers as good facilitators, so I'm not completely sure how well the conversation would flow in a citizens committee.
Yeah. Thanks, Stu.
Good comment, yeah. Okay, uh, call for the vote on ESAB then.
And these are just recommendations, right?
Well, yeah, we're going to counsel. All right, these are all recommendations to counsel, right? Yes.
One no, we have one no.
We have one no?
I believe.
So that carries. Um, the second one is just about extending, want to read it in?
Yeah, that members of the seniors and youth advisory committees, whose terms are ending in twenty twenty-two, be offered a one-year extension.
All right, anyone? Yeah, go ahead.
Administration probably doesn't have the answer, we don't know how many are in that role right now or situation.
Don't have the numbers today.
Four of seniors are up for renewal, two are in their first year, so it would be four.
So we don't, yeah, I'm. Going through with the fact that you haven't had this opportunity to discuss anything with them yet, you don't know whether or not they would feel that.
Yes, would be something that. That will be, uh, next Wednesday.
So. I'm I'm just wondering, I I my question would be, is this maybe premature?
They're just getting offered.
Just we offered, it's an individual decision, I might say yes, you might say no.
Okay.
And I know one member of the youth committee I don't think is eligible after this year, I think we we interviewed her, so. I think we, we interviewed her, so.
And, and the purpose behind the one year extension, just for me, for clarity, where have that?
Because we have people in the committee right now who want to have their fingers in deciding the future. Yeah, it's going to take a bit of year.
And would any of the one year extensions be in, like you said, in conflict? Like would be, be over what the bylaw has in relation to six years?
One person, but I mean, I think that they just are not allowed, so.
They age out.
Yeah, they age out. Yeah.
So, but I would interpret this motion that they would be given the extension because honestly, I'll take anyone's opinion if they still want to contribute, even if they've aged out.
I know, but if it's in conflict with the bylaw.
Oh, you can amend the bylaw.
I could say excluding those who age out.
Yeah.
I can add that.
Or just if eligible.
If eligible. Sure, if eligible.
If eligible, that's, that's.
Why don't we say regardless of eligibility?
Hopefully nobody on the seniors. I really hope nobody on the seniors committee.
If they age out, there's trouble.
Yeah.
All right, you good?
Uh, yeah, no, I'm not clarity.
So call for the votes. All right, your next one?
Yeah, so this one is that recruitment initiatives for the SAC and YAC specify that in twenty twenty three admin will work with the committees to plan for how best to engage Albert residents and improve the advisory mechanisms available to council and advise on the future of YAC and SAC.
So I'll accept that, but I'm going to get you to speak to it a little bit.
Sure.
I just, yeah, maybe you'll speak to it and maybe you'll answer my question.
And I guess I'll throw it out there. I, I can totally take seniors advisory out of this because I, I don't know how they feel about it. So the youth see value in recruiting people this year to add for next year, however many spaces there are. I think there's only a couple available, like we're actually doing really well right now. Because they, they want to be involved at deciding the future of the, the youth committee. They see value in adding additional voices and because it's not the same kind of concern about the advisory function. It's still a really exciting opportunity for them to learn about governance. It's an exciting opportunity for them to learn about, you know, administrative activities. It's an exciting opportunity for them to be part of that discussion that, that will set the next kind of generation of youth up, so.
So you're essentially saying continue recruitment, but let them know it's just.
That's what this purpose is.
Yeah.
And I could take seniors off. No problem.
Question.
Go ahead.
So I mean, this is specifically around the recruitment initiatives, but then you tie it into the fact that we, administration will be asked to work with the committees to best engage around, around kind of a bigger, broader mandate for all of our committees. And, you know, where I get, where I hear Randy talking about inclusion or a citizen committee of the whole. But why would we stop just YAC and SAC? Why wouldn't we engage all of our committees around having that discussion? Because they're all involved, they're all committee, they're all citizens of our.
Yeah.
Community. So why would we just limit it to two?
That's not, she's just taking what?
No, but if you read this.
I copied and pasted whatever these guys said.
So that's more of a question for administration.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm just saying is, is are we engaged, is the intent then to engage in all of this citizen advisory committees around that discussion?
So Council, I think the focus today is look at the seniors and youth committee and really focus on what their mandate is moving for. However, once the seniors and youth come up with a, with that potential ideas, we could, excuse me, take those ideas to the other committees and they can provide feedback before we bring the report back to council.
It doesn't have to even be committees, in my opinion. I think you could, you know, talk to the African and friendship. Like some of those broader groups, yeah.
Well, I, I'm.
Allowed.
I just, I, that sounds like a complicated process. It sounds like a two stage process. And then, I mean, why wouldn't you not just have one process involving all the committee?
I, I guess we could, however, I think, you know, right now we're talking about the youth and the seniors. And they really need to focus on what their future looks like. And I think if we have those two groups come up with some suggested.
Okay.
Way to move forward, then it actually gives the other group something to respond to that they could contribute and to as well. And we can include that in the report coming back to council.
Could I just jump in? I think it is a two stage process to, to Diane's point. So this speaks specifically to those others. If, if you wish, the more general question of how do we improve advisory mechanisms? Not related to, you know, the, the youth or the seniors in this case, but any committee I, I would offer could do the analysis and say, we think we can be more effective. Or we think there are other mechanisms to make us more effective. That's a general question. I think we put to everybody quite easily and see what people say. Council wishes, but this is specific, I think, to this demographic.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hope everybody understands where I'm coming from on this one. Because I think that, I mean, if we open it up to two of our committees for specific, and I, I realize it's maybe specific around their mandate and their learning opportunities, which I support. I like, I like that opportunity because you want to, you want to engage our youth and teach them some of the processes and how, how to, how to get involved. I guess I just say that we're, if, why would we stop at two of our committees? Why wouldn't we look at?
Well, I don't think this is specifying that we would.
And, but I just, it's a two, it isn't, but as long as that's what's going to happen in the sense of it. Because I think what we're going to do is by saying, look, here's, we've disbanded one of our committees. And now, or well, the recommendation is, is we disband one and we have the other two. Would just make sense to me that we, we would seek everybody's involvement, so.
I can, I can speak to that in debate, Mayor.
No, and I, I'm.
I think you're over complicating it. I think it's, I think it's going to happen exactly how you envisioned.
We're getting it, I'm reading.
Anyone else on debate? Well.
Are we on debate?
We're not on debate, we're on questions.
Oh, sorry. That's okay.
Okay.
Questions, and then I'll go to you for debate.
Okay.
I don't see any hands up, so go ahead. Well, no, I had questions.
Oh, questions?
Yeah, okay, because I'm trying to, this, this, this one seems like in contradiction because we just said yes to a one year extension, which kind of imply that there's an end date to this. And then we're saying we're still recruiting. So like we're giving mixed messages here because the intention was we weren't going to recruit. We're going to kind of bring it to a close and if we're going to do it, we'll revamp it. So I'm trying to figure out how, I'm just like, should we reconsider the previous motion? And just saying no and we're just recruiting with that intention? Because at this point, we're contradicting ourselves with these two motions. We're saying we're offering everybody a one year extension, which could actually causes tons of problems if they keep going because of the staggered approach now is off staggered. Now we're going to have a bunch of new people coming in at, at a weird time. Or, and we're still recruiting. Like I just, I think we need to pick a lane, so this is where I'm, so is the intentions like, I just, what is the intention here? Because it sounds like we're still trying to keep everything going, but we're still offering one year. We're going in two different directions. So what is the intention with this? I, I would say that the year extension, because this is going to be a year of planning. And there's, there's no foregone conclusion that we're going to disband the committees. So that would lead to maybe why you would want to continue to recruit, but.
Then maybe we shouldn't offer the one year extension. If we're, if we haven't still made a decision of which way we're going, we should just continue and just include just the third motion and rescind that second motion.
Yeah, but it, I think, I, I don't think it matters either way.
It just, it's going to script all the recruiting now because we have it where every other year, so many people go and we're now offering a one. So now before we three, then it'll be like five people that'll be filling the slots and we.
We can compensate that at the next recruitment if we have to.
Yeah, it's just, there's so many new people coming into the game at that point. And that's something about the legacy of understanding how everything works. That's all. Okay, anyway, guess how I'm going to foot on this one now? That's it.
Okay, now I'm seeing no more questions to debate.
So this came up actually as a directly from feedback from the, these advisory committee. Kind of explained the, the details. What, what I think is important, kind of before we get to that next step about engaging all our advisory committees is, you know, I'm going to use the seniors advisory committee as an example. My expectation is they'll advise that it be disbanded. Because there's really great representation from seniors on all of our advisory committees. That's my best guess, based on a few of the discussions I've had. So in that case, that's a really good piece of information to take to our other advisory committees and say, hey, you know, are we, are we well represented by this demographic? And on the youth advisory side, I, I think it's probably going to be a different recommendation. We've already talked about a few different ideas earlier this year. So again, if that, that committee comes up with, hey, these are a couple of our, our ideas for how we can move forward. Then again, we can kind of reach out to other committees and say, hey, what do you think of these ideas? How can we incorporate these into our overall process? So I think that has a lot of value. And then I think I already spoke to continuing recruiting for youth advisory. I will split this up if, if, if anyone wants to, to seniors and youth, but for youth specifically. It, it really gives people right now a voice in terms of what this looks like for the future. And with youth too, it's a shorter window. Like really, once you age out, you age out seniors, you could totally be a member from fifty five to sixty. And then you can take a break for five years and then you can come back for five years. Youth don't have that same opportunity. You know, we've seen that a lot with our environmental advisory committee, for example, someone will leave, they'll come back, you know, a couple of years later. Youth don't have that, that opportunity. So this kind of provides more space for them to have their voice heard. Those are my comments.
Great. Anyone else on debate?
Just, uh. We, we had the same discussion two weeks ago with the environmental advisory committee. The comment came up, we haven't had anything really to be advisory on in the last month or two. And, and that was explained as they were waiting for council's strategic plan to work through the, the environmental team. So that they could start to scope out their work plan and then they would be coming back to the committee for advice on specific projects. So I think the idea that we've got here of just focusing on youth and seniors where there, there is a, a stated gap and opportunity for improvement. And then when we get some ideas back, we can come back to the environmental committee. They're already saying, hey, we're, we're ready to go as an advisory group. Once we see, you know, what you need our advice on. We've had a pretty successful year in the past. So I'm, I'm okay with, with engaging them in a two step process, not having them involved in, in this kind of review. And they'll be busy, you know, hopefully will be busy in the next little while. And when this new plan comes forward, they can, they can take a look at it and, and review it. Maybe give some advice or, or input as to how they bring that new ideas in, into the environmental committee. But I don't think they need to be engaged at, at this new formulation stage. So I'm, I'm okay with the way it's proposed and focused in on, on youth and senior right at the moment.
Great, sure. So the difference between the previous recognition, this one is that the previous one was not recruiting and this one is recruiting. That's the major difference here. And I just, I just feel comfortable giving mixed messages. So we've already offered the one year extension. That should be enough for youth to be able to meet their requirements for quorum. That being said, we're seeing there's frequently issues with quorum, which also lends the issue of having the youth committee. But if there's only two spots open, we're still, we're giving, it's very difficult to end a committee once it's been formed, as we're seeing right now, regardless of how busy or not busy they are. Once the committee's formed, it's very difficult to pull the plug. And I'm seeing it continue to be difficult to pull the plug. And we're going now in two different directions because we don't actually want to commit one direction or another. And so I just, if this motion passes, then I guess we're recruiting. If it fails, we're going to have to give direction about whether or not we're recruiting. Because we still are living that blank and until admin gets otherwise, they're recruiting. I don't have a problem saying about what the plan is going to be for the next year. We don't need to tell them that. The committee will come, will come with me and tell them this is a deal. It's what we're looking at. But I just do not feel comfortable telling people that we're extending things for a year, but we're still recruiting or looking at not getting rid of it, but we might still keep it. We just have to make a decision as difficult as it is. Recommendation is basically to change it and to move forward with a different type of committee that's all encompassing. If we want to keep the youth committee and say we're keeping it, then we should just say we're keeping it. And that's it, in spite of the fact that there's issues that were brought forward in the background. And first, and the seniors committee, I think it's not that they don't want to, they just have not been asked. They would love to be able to provide input, just like advisory would let, wants to, environmental would provide input. It's not about a lack of willingness, it's just that they have not been brought topics on their plate to have those questions being asked. They're very eager to have them, but it just has not hit their desk. That's what's come of it. So it's not about lack of eagerness at all. And my other concern I have with the youth advisory committee is just that it's not about whether or not they want to do it. It's about whether or not the city wants to be sitting in an educational role for this committee, just so that we educate them about government. Is that what, is that one of our mandates now is to educate and provide this? Or are they there to provide advisory? Because every other committee out there is to provide advice, not just to provide education to those participating. So it's difficult, but I think that if we're going, we have to pick a lane. And right now the lane is to move forward with a different committee and to see if it's functional. And if it's not, we can go back and discuss this. But I do not feel comfortable telling people mixed messages, so I'm going to be holding against it. Go ahead.
I'm just gonna, just out of where I'm thinking, I, I mean, I recognize these are recommendations. But I, I don't see a lot of difference between initiatives in this one than in the, than in the third motion, the original motion from administration. So I mean, the, the intent was administration was going to be working with YAC and SAC around what this, what the future looks like. The only, the change here is of course is that, as identified, the recruitment initiatives will continue. So I, I just, I, I just see this motion as not redundant because it adds recruitment initiatives. But it, I think the last time we met with these, the, the youth advisory committees, they had sixteen members on the, on the, on the committee. And I, I, I also wonder, like, how many? I mean, if, if we've extended them already for one year, are you going to, at what point do you become? And I don't know, maybe we, maybe we only say fifteen or maybe we go to twenty. I don't know, but it becomes a point to consider. So I guess I'll wait for closing and see whether or not that that's something. But I just see that this is not necessary considering that administration was already going to be looking at recommendations for the future. Not only YAC and SAC, but also bringing back future recommendations on the entire advisory committees.
I'm going to jump in. I see these motions, the one that we just passed and the one that's right of us is completely parallel and not in contradiction. It's about getting as many people at the table to have this conversation and, and explaining to them what the conversation is going to be about. Now things changing, we still have a seniors bylaw, we still have a youth advisory bylaw. During recruitment, we will have a max number of people we can recruit done. And if it just, the extension motion, just those three or four kids or whatever it is, don't have to reapply. It's all that is. Otherwise they would reapply and we'd be recruiting, right? So this is about getting as many people at the table to start a conversation about their future and how they can advise council. There's obviously a willingness, I want to see that happen, see it continue, want to make sure that our processes are laying out topics that we can ask our community members, whether they be seniors or youth or anyone on, on advice before we jump into making decisions. So I think, especially because the youth brought this forward and they asked for this. It sounds like there's lots of interest in our community. I will, I don't care. It's just more work for ledge and a little bit more work for a council to do interviews. But other than that, it's about getting lots of kids involved, so I'm good. I don't see anyone else, so you go.
Okay, just really briefly, I want to say that quorum has not been an issue this last year. I've been so impressed with the group. I think it's even the last three meetings that we've actually been in person has made such a difference in how excited people are about physically being in this room together. And that's great to see. I'd also say that there, there's tremendous value in providing development opportunities for our youth. We see that, you know, in the, the programs that we have or that, that Arts and Heritage has through the, through the museum. Incredible opportunities for kids to learn about how we work because to get their involvement, they have to understand how we work. And, you know, I just got an email from my kid's school last night saying, we've got a presentation that we're hosting at the Arden about childhood anxiety. All those things absolutely have value and seniors, I have no comment on, but I want to include them as well. So, so that's why I kind of supported this recommendation that came from the youth advisory committee. That's all I have.
So I've got, I don't know where Council Berman's gives, but I've got Council Killit, Council Broadhead, Council Jolly, myself. And maybe Council with most, I'm not sure. She's a no, a favor, and then the other three opposed.
And the other three.
Don't mean to say your names, Council.
And Stu T, before you leave, if you can send an email to update the committee on what happened, because I don't have anyone's email. Thank you.
You could do the last one.
Sure, and the very last motion is that admin return in Q two, twenty twenty-three with a report on opportunities to improve advisory mechanisms, including recommendations for the future of YAC and SAC. But certainly, it's only six months.
All right, any comments on that one? My only comment would be at one point, I think it would be good to get the two groups together. So I'm sure you'll have the seniors have a conversation, their committee will still meet and have a conversation. So the youth, but we should organize them to get together at least once. That's all. So for the votes. And that one looks like it passes unanimously. Okay. All right. That was way more complicated than I thought it was going to be. Hey, take a five-minute break and stretch and we'll get on to the riveting audit. Or audit. Sorry.
Somebody's.
We're back and I'm going to turn it right over to Brenda.
Good morning. Good morning. Hi, yep. That was a little strange, but we're all good. Good morning, committee members. This audit management report is an annual report to give an update on administration's progress on the twenty twenty-one audit recommendations from KPMG. During the twenty twenty-one audit, there was one new area identified as a recommendation for improvement. This recommendation is to ensure our relationship with the Edmonton Metropolitan Regional Transit Commission is fully understood and reflected correctly within the financial statements. So in July of this year, council approved an amending loan agreement from one point seven million to two point four million to the Transit Commission. Once the Transit Commission has prepared its budget for twenty twenty-three, which is expected later this month or early November, an agenda report will be prepared for council to discuss approval to enter detailed negotiations with service agreements. And this will help clarify the city's relationship with the Transit Commission. The remaining two recommendations were from prior year audits. These recommendations were quite complex and have taken several accounting cycles for the results to be assessed by the auditors. The first area involved the capital budget and budgets for both amortization and contributed tangible capital assets. Budgets for these areas have been set up for the twenty twenty-two budgeting process and will be reviewed by KPMG for its final implementation. The second recommendation was to require developers to provide costing information for these contributed tangible capital assets. And this costing requirement is now complete with a new mandatory capital asset costing form to be completed by all developers upon project completion. So that is the conclusion of my report and I will take any questions. Thank you.
Okay, that's fast. There's only a couple.
Short and sweet.
I'll open up for questions.
You're ignoring me on purpose?
Nope, I just was looking right first. Beating to the right today.
Ooh. I will let that go. So in relation to the previous recommendations from KPMG. So number two, number three, so the response around the creation of the form that administration has put in place, will that resolve? Or is it, are the two issues tied together? Or will the form resolve the second issue as well as the third issue?
No, there are separate issues. Um, this, the, I guess, well, the first issue or the second issue had to do with, we needed to develop budgets for both amortization for the contributed capital assets and for the amortization. And the second one, we needed to get a form that developers had to complete so that we knew how to accurately cost the assets that they were, you know, giving to us, contributing to us to put on our balance sheets. So that took that took quite a bit of time. And then that also involved us updating the engineering standards, which took place in twenty twenty. And then with COVID impacts, it just took a lot longer than we thought it was going to take.
Okay, yeah, no, I understood that. I mean, obviously it did when we, I mean, each, going back to twenty seventeen, it was always identified as something that the auditor. So will it, will the auditors identify or flag this again this time? Or will they also say, okay, we see that there's efforts being made or continuing efforts? Or do they, how do they, how will they, how would they respond to this?
What they will do is is this year for twenty twenty-two, they will review our progress on these recommendations. And if they feel the progress has met their recommendation, they will remove this audit point. They'll consider it completed or finished.
Okay.
Do you think they'll consider it completed?
I would hope so. That's my intent.
It would look odd to have a recommendation five years in a row without some. I mean, obviously, each year we've been working towards.
Right.
Very, like you said, it was challenging, complex.
Yeah, I guess the thing that I'll add is that the, obviously, the change to the engineering standards was the key activity. And that's the piece that got delayed through COVID. There was just other things that were just way more, you know, engineering stuff we're working on. One of the challenges you have, of course, is you start at the very beginning of the beginning of the process with the developer with the signing or, you know, like the development agreement, which has these things in it. Takes them a year to build their project, then it's in warranty for two years before they actually get their CCC certificate. And they're actually contributing assets to it. So even even from, it's really from when we started first sign or signing those new DAs. It could take up to four years before they ever have to submit costing information. So I wouldn't be surprised, honestly, to see this still on the books from the auditors for of the time. And now every developer as of today on will be doing that. But it could be up to four years before they contribute those assets with those costs associated with it. So but we'll be done all the work we can do. It's just a matter of now, just a waiting game for that to flow through the system.
Okay, I, one more question?
Yeah.
This relates to the first point, I guess, in relation and and maybe I'll look at Councilor Broadhead. The do we, are we specific, do we know the exact time of the budgets coming out on the EMTSC? Because, I mean, it says, I even highlighted it in green there that the intended that the agenda report that we're going to get back will basically determine the direction we're going to move forward, whether in support or not. So are is are we at any risk of having that continue to be moved down the road?
I hope not. No, they, well.
No, I know.
The municipality, that's that's a part of the established commission.
Yeah.
Understand when I say that we're a part of an established commission.
Yeah.
Will receive their budget stuff soon.
Soon. Okay, I like how you.
It's just interesting because.
Right around Halloween.
I just understand what we're a part of.
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand, I understand, but I'm just saying it was interesting that it was identified as a separate paragraph in here to say. So I, all right. Not to like.
Yeah. Um, just to follow on on EMTSC. There are two big components. One is the loan that we've increased it to on behalf of the other municipalities. Edmonton and ourselves providing that loan. Is that payment of that loan set up in one year, two year, three years? Is it four years starting last year when we approved it?
So the first thing I want to clarify is we did not give a loan. No, right. See, we named a guarantee.
A loan guarantee.
Actually belongs to the transmission itself. And I think their plan as part of their requisitions is for it to be paid off over four years. Okay, is their plan, that's what their budget, I believe, will, I believe.
You'll see it right away.
So starting what year?
Next year.
That, so starting.
Twenty twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so so that's on our, is that actually as a loan guarantee? Is that on our books? It's just.
How's it recorded?
It's just how it's recorded. Yeah, because there's been some questions around loan versus loan guarantee.
The only time it would hit our books is if somehow the loan got recalled by the bank or something like that. Yeah, so right now it's just a guarantee. No transaction has taken place in terms of St. Albert's Corporation.
Okay, no, I was asking just for pure clarification, because there's been some confusion around loan versus loan guarantee. And then the the twenty-nine percent of their full operating budget. But so they're they're going to come back to us in a couple of weeks, hopefully, with the things that are listed here, commuter service costs, local service costs, transit, all of those five items. And our percentage that we would start to show on our books is twenty-nine percent of that. That is that, or is that value changed since Edmonton made their changes? Says on page 31, it said 29. Twenty one percent.
Brenda, just, just hold on a second.
Yeah, I would just, councillor, like, we don't know because we haven't seen all the budgeting yet. I would say that we do have some upcoming discussions specific to transit. As opposed to the audit recommendation specific to transit. So to delve deeper into it, we'll have the opportunity. Decisions on the, the air we're gonna do this afternoon is early.
Okay. Point of privilege.
Yeah.
We're, we're dealing with audit recommendations around the fact that they, excuse me, my mouth is full of the big, with the relationship and how that's going to be reported on the audit. We're not delving into the transit agreement yet. So I, I just want to make sure we're focusing on what the audit recommendations is and not go down the rabbit hole of.
It's hard when the recommendation is about understanding our relationship.
For our inextricably linked, but just in terms of the detailed questioning, that opportunity I would submit. Yeah.
Yeah, and, and just to councillor Mackay's point, I'm just simply reading the background and trying to understand the numbers that were provided in there.
That's why I identified that standalone paragraph. I just want to make sure that we're staying within the audit and that the discussion will occur at, around the transit will occur when we get the finalized budget numbers.
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
I would see being able to remove this recommendation next, like the next round for sure. In, in, in EMT, transit and the relationship there, so. Keep going, Mike.
So on recommendation number three, then again to councillor Mackay's question around, we, we sent out our, our, the forms were finalized as to what we wanted developers to report in 2021, I think. Or, or it was policy, became policy in 2021. And the forums were just sent out recently to the developers to say, this is what you need to now start reporting?
No, just to clarify, so in 2021, the engineering standards were updated and, and put on the website. And then just this August of 2022, the developer costing form was created and has been sent out to the, the developers. We haven't received any back at the time of, of writing this report. We're hoping to, within the next probably six weeks, because projects are closing. So we should be getting some of those developer forums back in this, before the end of the year.
Do we know an approximate value, Brenda, of what those would be coming this year, kind of first, first tranche or first of the four-year cycle?
Not at this point. There have been a number, we'll have to, have to see it based on how many CCCs will be issued, construction completion certificates. So I will know that, again, probably within six weeks or so, when these projects start closing off. So it's a little bit early yet.
Okay, but that would, that would start to give hard evidence to our auditor that this process is actually working.
Yes.
That would give us the, the green checkmark.
The tick, yeah. Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You good?
Yep.
Any more questions? Go ahead. Hi Brenda. So when I look at the capital budget, I'm just going to go to page thirty, thirty. Right below, it says, we recommend the components included processes for capital budget amendments. This is our cap priorities, including approved but delayed projects and carry forward amounts. That was in 2017. So was that addressed or not? Because all the updates don't provide any other information about that. It's a 2017 recommendation. Yeah. So did we make changes? Or, and if so, what did we change?
So when we got this recommendation in 2017, it was in April or May, we'd already actually started the budgeting process for 2018. So we were actually even a little bit late to start implementing it for 2018. And then, so in 2018, the, the budgeting team then started looking at the 2017 recommendation. So it was a bit of a timing issue there on it. And just because it was, it was quite a complex recommendation, the entire capital plan had to be looked at. That's why it's, it's taken almost five years to get this recommendation completed.
So I guess, and that, I understand that. I saw the 2018, but so what did they want to change in the capital budget amendments? And the approved but delayed capital projects, what did they want to have changed? And what did, what have we done? And have we finished that? Because I just didn't see an update in the other following years to say that that's, that loophole's been closed. You discussed a lot about the developer, but not about those specific items.
So we didn't actually have a budget for amortization on our financial statements. We didn't have a budget for contributed capital assets, which they wanted. And they wanted more clarity around our capital budget and our plan. So that they understood what we were showing within our financial statements.
Okay, so those have been addressed.
Those have been addressed now, correct.
That, that line item is, that's been closed then?
Correct, yeah.
That was, I think that was it. Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions?
Charlie, you're good? Okay, can I get someone to make the motion?
I'll do it because I think I might win. At the standing committee of the whole recommended council, if the audit management recommendations report did October 11th, 2022, be received as information.
Any comments?
Yeah, I appreciate getting these. So know where we're at and, and not answer that. Both council and the public are aware that the recommendations are being followed through at. Even if it takes longer, at least we know where we're at and that there is some accountability to make sure that our processes become stronger. So thank you for this.
We're good? Top of the vote? Apposits unanimously? Okay. Okay, now we get into the fun stuff. Planning stuff, so St. Albert West, area structure plan. Do platters pop on the screen? Hi Tracy, hi Christina. But Tracy, you're taking us through this, right?
Yeah, Tracy's going to take you through everything. And we've also got the consultants from StanTech also on the call. So Scott Cole will also be here to help answer some of the questions for you.
Excellent.
So go ahead, Tracy.
All right, thank you. Good morning. My name is Tracy Sui, planner with the city. And I'm here to present an update on the St. Albert West ASP project. I'd also like to introduce our consultant StanTech on the project. We have Scott Cole, who is our project manager, and Kyle Witte, the planning lead.
Good afternoon, or good morning, I should say.
Okay. The agenda for this presentation will include a refresher of the planning framework, the St. Albert West ASP process and schedule summary of what we heard from phase one engagement. And finally, an overview of the proposed land use concept, as well as some policy highlights for each of the land uses. Area structure plans are statutory documents that provide a framework for future development of undeveloped areas. On the hierarchy to the right, we see that ASP sit in the middle of the overall planning framework. And as we move from top to bottom of the hierarchy, the level of detail increases in terms of the land use designations and policies. And each of the level must also conform to its previous level. So for example, area structure plans must conform to the municipal development plan. And just below the ASP line, we see that we have neighborhood plans. And the two of these plans, ASPs and NPs, make up the city's new two-tier planning framework. And the St. Albert West ASP will be the first ASP that will implement this new two-tier system. Here we have a map that shows the location of how these plans are applied. We have the municipal development plan for the entire city. And then smaller area of land typically greater than 256 hectares for ASPs. And the neighborhood plans that typically cover at least 64 hectares of lands. So the two NP that we see that's part of this project is Lakeview Business District and Badgerlands. This is the project schedule. The green represents the ASP process and the blue represents the area. We are currently about halfway through the ASP process. And this project kicked off with an in-depth review of city documents such as the MDP and master plans that will inform the ASP for state analysis. We also had a series of engagement sessions with internal and external stakeholders, indigenous communities, landowners within the project area, and an open house with the general public to learn more about the opportunities and constraints within the area. And for this month of October, we will be having another round of engagement sessions to present the draft land use concept and policy highlights for feedback, which is similar to this presentation that we're giving today. After that, we will work on cleaning up all the maps, finalizing the policy document and preparing it for council approval in the new year. We are aiming for this ASP approval sometime in early spring of 2023. We will also be starting the design work on servicing to the Lakeview Business District in the new year, as well as working on those neighborhood plans for Lakeview Business District and Badgerlands. So overall, the development of this ASP does require collaboration with other city departments. So the planning branch has been working closely with engineering, utilities and other departments throughout the course of this project. Community engagement is a significant component of the St. Albert West ASP. And the phase one of the engagement took place in spring and summer. And so the next slides will provide a high-level summary of the themes heard and what the project team did in response. So one of the themes that we've heard was in relation to natural environment. We've been hearing there's interest in protecting the natural features such as Carrot Creek, Big Lake, Surgeon River and other natural features. It's also important that we are considerate of wildlife habitat and movements. And there's also input regarding the designation of the land south of Middle View Drive as major open spaces. But just to follow up on that item, council has decided that the subject lands remain as employment areas to accommodate stormwater facilities. So in response also to the other components in our policies, we will be requiring technical studies at the neighborhood plan stage to help identify environmental reserves. We'll talk about buffering and any setback requirements to help minimize impact on the environment and policies around conservation management as well. Another theme that we've been hearing is active transportation. We know that the area around Big Lake is highly utilized for recreational purposes. And we are hearing that there is interest in continuing that network throughout the rest of the area and along Carrot Creek. So in policy terms, we are going to require sidewalks on both sides and integrate a multimodal network to form part of the regional trails, trail system that would connect to Loews Hole Park as well. We'll also make reference to key documents that will form, inform the development of these trail networks. In terms of land uses, there are interest in enabling commercial and retail development in the Lakeview Business District. There's interest in having grocery stores, restaurants, recreational facility, shops and adequate services. And within our land use concept, we will be having two areas that will contain commercial development. And those two areas are mixed-use employment areas and mixed-use areas. As well, the community amenity site has been approved under the Shiro ASP. So that's what we're also bringing forward as well, which is an opportunity for passive and active recreational opportunities. For servicing, there's input to ensure that they are efficiently located and sized. And our stormwater plans will be reviewed in accordance with the city's utility master plans and further technical studies such as servicing design briefs. In terms of cultural and historical features, there is input to protect native and medicinal plant species and to be considerate of the lines around Big Lake where indigenous camps were formerly located. So in response for that, we are working through a, an historical resource act approval application for the lines around Big Lake. We also have those lands designated as major open spaces, which means that they will remain undeveloped, except there might be some trails, but majority of it will be kept natural. And we're also thinking of incorporating some pictures of these native plant species so that future developers are aware that they're in the area. So that's just a quick summary of all of the themes at a high level that we've heard. I'll now go into the proposed land use concept, which was provided in the agenda report package. Before we get into the land use concept, it is important that we discuss the vision for the land use concept as it does set the stage for the rest of the ASP and the policies that we will be drafting. So the vision for the St. Albert West ASP is that it would be a strategically important area to help achieve sustainable tax base and generate employment for the city. The Lakeview Business District will also be innovative and accommodate the city's focus sectors. We'll also have a vision to protect Carrot Creek, Big Lake, Surgeon River and other natural features. Another vision is that we see mixed-use areas incorporated amongst the residential and employment areas. And throughout the rest, throughout the entire area, it will be a vibrant and walkable and well-connected community. And with that vision, we have our draft land use concept. So I'll be going through each of the land uses separately in the following slides. Starting off with neighborhoods, we have them shown in the light yellow portions, which is in the Shiro neighborhood, as well as a little bit in the northeast corner of the project area. And the total area for neighborhoods is about 77 hectares. And some of the policy highlights is that these areas would accommodate a diverse range of housing forms. We'll strive to meet a minimum of 40 dwelling units per net residential hectare. Within these areas, school, parks and local shops and services will be located in a convenient distance to the residents. And for any non-residential uses within the area, we'll have policy to speak to the compatibility with the form and character and function with the rest of the area. Next, we have employment area shown in the purple and they're dispersed throughout the area from the north to the south, majority of it in the Lakeview Business District and encompasses a total of 250 hectares. Within these areas, the vision is that there would be a diversity of light industrial, professional office buildings and other uses that would generate employment opportunities. There's also the opportunity to incorporate the focus sectors that the city has developed, which include agribusiness, advanced manufacturing, construction, life sciences, transportation logistics. And we'll also seek to develop the areas as a high-quality built form such as Class A. And any development that is near residential, natural areas or other open spaces, we will have policy to mitigate any impacts such as through development setbacks. Our next land use is the mixed-use employment areas, which is the hatched purple areas. And we have it north of the CN rail and in the north part of the project area. The total of 36 hectares. Again, they will, it will be similar to the employment areas with light industrial and offices, but there would be a greater amount of commercial uses that would complement and primarily serve the employees within the adjacent employment areas. These areas would also have smaller parcels. So it creates more of an appropriate transition between areas like the residential to the rest of the employment areas. And also the small, smaller parcels would also support pedestrian-oriented environments. We also have major open spaces, which we have shown in the area around Big Lake and the school and park sites. These make up about 228, 228 hectares. And policy within these area would be about to minimize any disruption caused by development to the topography, wildlife habitat movement and the natural environment. We'll also seek to create a high-quality and multifunctional green network that would serve the recreational, social, cultural and ecological needs of the community and is consistent with the Red Willow Park West Master Plan. And the trail network that's proposed in that plan as well. The mixed-use areas, we have a small portion of it in orange within the Shiro neighborhood. This area is viewed as a vibrant community focal point with a range of commercial uses, multi-residential buildings. And the, all arranged in a cohesive and pedestrian-oriented network of streets and open spaces. It's also serving to be complementary with the community amenity site. And within, for these buildings, we, for those that are vertically built, mixed use is an opportunity for that. So ground level commercial with residential units on top. And then finally, we have a land use called alternate jurisdiction, which includes anything that is away to the provincial lands. So the provincial road right away, the Ray Gibbon Drive, provincial lands and the Loews Hole Centennial Provincial Park. And I will make note. And I will make note, just clarify that not all the lands right now within this area is owned by the province, but the city is working with the province to procure these lands needed for future provincial activities. And some of the policies for this area is that the city would work with the province with respect to road upgrades, access and linkages to Ray Gibbon Drive, provide trail connections to the Loews Hole Park, steward the Loews Hole Park in accordance with its management plan, and collaborate with the province and regional municipalities to port any passive recreation and educational opportunities. And just also wanted to show the transportation network, which at the ASP level only identifies the crosstown, the connectors, and the neighborhood roads at a conceptual level. Although that local roads and trail networks will be identified at the neighborhood plan stage. So that's a quick overview of our land use concept, and just to reiterate, our next steps is to complete our phase-two engagement this month. Come back to council in the new year with first reading and also refer this application to the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board. And then after that review, we will come back with a public hearing and seek council approval for the rest of the ASP. And in the summertime, we hope to achieve the approval of the neighborhood plans for the Lakeview Business District and Badger Lands. Thank you for the opportunity to present, and that concludes our presentation.
Awesome. Okay, so we've got Tracy and Christina, and then there we have Scott and Kyle from StanTech to answer questions. So I'll start with. No one has any good, Mike?
That's okay. As long as it wasn't Ken.
Started out the writing, yeah. Yeah, thanks for the presentation. Just a question on the this graphic, I guess, that shows Carrot Creek, and we talked about double in the slide echo forty-five. I think forty-five. On yours, it might have been slide thirteen, yeah, or twelve, twelve.
The, the future land use concept, that's the one?
Future land. The green line around Carrot Creek, it, it looks like it's only on one side of Carrot Creek. I don't know if that's just graphic representation. I, I just want to make sure, because this was a, when Adrian presented several months ago, there's a survey that was sent out to council, and there is this term, single-sided versus double-sided green space along Carrot Creek. There was some confusion around what that meant. And our, our responses were kind of all over the map, I think, when we, when we provided feedback. So I just want to have clarity and assurance that we've got double-sided green space along Carrot Creek, protecting it on both sides to the fifty meters. Is, is that correct?
So I can start with that question, Tracy. Maybe you can provide a little bit more detail. Scale of this areas, the scope of this area structure plan is basically split by Carrot Creek. So right now, what you're seeing is the land use concept for the east side of Carrot Creek, and we don't have an ASP in process or at this time for the west side of Carrot Creek. But that policy that you're referring to is captured within municipal development plan. So going forward, the next area structure plan would have more details regarding that fifty-meter environmental reserve and MR component. And Tracy, maybe I'll pass it off to you if there's anything else that you'd like to add.
No, I think that was the right response. This ASP just covers the east side of the Carrot Creek. And policy will be touched on, brought forward from the MDP speaking to one side, one-sided development.
So I, I appreciate that answer, and I, I was aware that this was split. But I, I'm trying to get a clear answer that the next version for, for the west side will also show that protection where I, I understand we're only dealing with the east side, but I conceptually, I want to ensure that we're protecting both sides of Carrot Creek when the two other plan comes forward.
So that's the policy direction right now contained within the municipal development plan. So in order for us as administration to propose something different, we'd actually have to go to council to ask for an amendment to the MDP. So yes, it is protected on the other side at this time.
Okay, good. Thank, thank you. It's just, again, clarity of seeing things in two different pieces coming at two different times. Just want to make sure we're, we're synced up there. The, the question also around how, how do we ensure the concept around not leapfrogging in, in development? That's an important factor in terms of our costs of servicing. So how, how is that addressed in in this land use concept and ensure that we don't, you know, incur these additional costs of, of leapfrogging while we still want to get development going in key areas? How is that addressed?
Under our MDP, we do have policies that speak to the phasing of the development, and those are brought forward down to the ASP level as well. We have, under our MDP, we also have the priority growth areas. And that also contributes to the order of the development. At ASP and neighborhood plan stage, we'll have more details to what that timing would look like as well and implementation.
So it, it's, it's addressed at, at a later level with a neighborhood plan level or?
It's at both levels. Through this plan, we'll give a high-level phasing to each of the different areas, and then with further refinement at the neighborhood plan, you'll get much more specific and maybe Scott, if you've got anything else you'd like to add to this, feel free.
Thanks, Christina. Absolutely, you're correct. So essentially, from your municipal development plan to the overall area structure plan, and then the detailed neighborhood plan, you're really looking at how the area is being developed on a contiguous basis. So to Christina's point, we're at the overall ASP right now, and we'll be showing conceptually from not only a servicing perspective but land use, the anticipated phasing and policy will also speak to that. And then when we get to the neighborhood plan level, that will have that much more specific information in it relating to the, the overall area.
Okay. Then last, last question was that when we were talking a while back, we had a presentation from one of the landowners that was concerned that their land was being zoned industrial, and they, I think they believed it was be higher value if it was zoned residential or in, in a residential neighborhood area. Did, does that, that landowner fall within this ASP, or was it on the other side of Carrot Creek? I can't, can't recall and.
I think that landowner might be the one that we see in the bottom purple parcel.
I know, but that was, I, I understand that farmer there, Christina, that owns that land. It was, it was up.
Avenir.
We've received different feedback for different projects. We are working with a lot of the landowners to address some of their concerns. We have heard some private landowners that they would like to see in a more extensive use of commercial and commercial activities. And then speaking very directly to land uses, and at this stage, we're still at, you know, like, that's at a much further in the planning process, when you're talking about zoning, there is a correlation, but at stage, we're, we're not actually looking at specific uses, but the general intent of the land itself. Trace, as Tracy mentioned, we do have this mixed employment area where there are a lot more opportunities for commercial activities. We are trying to preserve a larger percentage of the landmass for more standard employment slash industrial type uses, because that is where we end up with higher rates of employment, and then it also helps the city achieve their strategic goals. But this is part of the next stages of engagement where Tracy and the team are going to be speaking again to the landowners, showing them what we're proposing, seeing what their concerns are, if there's abilities to tweak it, to incorporate some of their comments. We will do so at this time. So this is, this map is subject to change. Same with the policies within it based upon the feedback that we receive. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you. It just, I, I, I know that one landowner presented to, to council, and I just wasn't sure if it was on this ASP or on the
It's on the MDP.
It was on the MDP.
They're, they're registered to speak today too.
Yeah, yeah.
You had a question. You're good? What's the profit?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, just a curiosity more than anything, because I, I'm going to ask an engineering question. You can tell me anything, and I'm going to believe it, but just a question. So as you look at this map, is why six stormwater management facilities in the residential areas and and less than that in the industrial areas? Is that a function of flow, or what, what is that?
So I will ask perhaps Scott to take a stab at this and
Small ones and big ones.
And that's great. And I was just going to say, I was going to ask Donnie about this, but essentially, the stormwater management ponds that are identified residential areas have already been, have been identified through the city's overall servicing plan, as well as through the area structure plan that was approved. We are currently working as part of the ASP on the technical studies regarding drainage, et cetera. And so right now, we're at that preliminary stage. More detailed information will still be provided once we get down to the neighborhood plan level. Now, topography also plays into it, as well as density requirements also play into it. Different requirements for that employment piece or industrial piece versus residential. I'm just wondering if Donnie, maybe you could answer or add anything to that?
I, I think you covered it, Scott. This is kind of the preliminary, and more as more technical studies get advanced, that will further be defined or refined, I should say.
And, and then just to follow up, there's, there's two old landfills in that area. What are the implications of that? Are we, are we going to have trouble with lead shade from one of the landfills going into these storm management ponds, or how does that manage?
I can probably actually answer that if nobody else can. I don't
The lawyer's going to answer the
I didn't notice Donnie on the call.
Well, both landfills have got monitoring wells that is currently being monitored, so the plan is to continue to monitor. The ones that landfill, it is forever a landfill, so we'll have to continue to monitor that and see how it affects the storm system.
And I could just add a little bit. We do have policies with the, or we will have policies within the ASP that speak to that to provide the information about the landfill so that it's transparent and people understand that that was the land use in the past.
That what you were going to say, David?
Basically, I've been involved, of course, in a future donation agreement. So we're dealing with that from a legal standpoint as well, so I can assure all council, we will, we have all bases covered on, on that topic.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Great. Shina, you have a question too?
I got, I got a couple here, actually. So, okay. When the ASP is approved, is that when the off-site levies are going to be due, or with the timing, when is, when are off? I felt like it was when ASPs approved that we have to pay the, no, no, development agreement? Okay, so
Or subdivision agreement.
Subdivision. Okay, so for land that we own, we can approve the ASP no problem, and it's not to be extra development that we have something, we have to start working over cash, right?
Sorry, that's correct.
Okay, perfect. The other thing is, I can't read, and I just, I could just be, I just forgot, but we have here a school site at the community recreation site. So did we agree that that's where we're going to put a school site as well? Was that I thought we already had so many rec things that we're competing for, and a school takes like ten acres, actually. But did we agree that we're putting a school site there?
So this will be within, I think, the existing area structure plan that we're incorporating into this, that says that there may be a school site located at that spot. We've got similar language incorporated into this area structure plan. We are contemplating trying to figure out if we can get a high school site in this area. But that's all part of the next phases is to figure out exactly how they'll all work together.
Okay, I just, I think we would have done things differently if we knew we had ten acres more of demand. Now, I'm just trying to go up north here, like we have, where I think was the Badger Lands, which is in it, we have Fowler Way running through it, and then we have North saying neighborhoods, and then we don't have anything below it. Am I wrong? Like, my, that's where the Badger Lands are, right? Okay, so I'm not wrong on that. So my understanding was that we're going to have the Badger Lands included in this ASP, but it looks like only a portion of it is, and we're calling it neighborhoods. So could you help me figure out what's going on here?
Yeah, the Badger Lands will be under two different ASPs. So the portion above Fowler Way is under the St. Albert West, and then the south portion of Badger Lands, south of Fowler Way, is under the North Ridge Phase Two ASP. So it's just under two ASPs, and we'll be updating the North Ridge ASP as well to speak, to provide direction for the neighborhood plan, which will be combining the entire north and south together.
Okay.
But there is a specific council motion on the Badger Lands that we have on the CCAP list as well, so specifically with the south portion to come back and at the very least paint that picture.
And, and we made the decision apparently to put the north portion of it as neighborhoods. So, because I thought we were using it for like city facilities until otherwise, or we're not developers. So again, what's going on with that then?
So the north, sorry, Tracy, the north portion that's identified as neighborhood is not city land. That is owned by Strata at this time, and in the MDP, it's identified as a neighborhood area. So we have left it that way. We will be speaking with Strata and the landowner through this process and getting their feedback.
Just that, because I thought that when this report from is coming through, it's going to cut through a portion of it. So I, I'm just trying to like figure out why I'm confused, because obviously I am. It's, it's on me.
It's there.
It's part of Aaron Ridge North, North, no, sorry, North, North Ridge, it's called. Right, okay.
Which is to the right of essentially the Badger Lands, as we discussed it, specific to the solar farm, which is what you see sort of more.
So the solar farms, the purple. Okay, and I was thinking it's yellow for some reason. So we're calling employment, sorry. Yes, times up. When you're just looking at a map, everything just goes a different direction. Often I've said, oh, there's France, so close to Germany. Who knew? And so the employment lens, we're now calling employment areas. Is that just as a default right now, or what is, why?
It's in correlation to what, the way it's labeled within the MDP. We don't, the employment lands or the old employment lands that we're always referring to was, is now been named Lakeview Business District. The MDP, we refer to anything that's kind of commercial industrial as employment lands.
But we really haven't decided what we're doing with that land, I guess, so.
No, that's part of this process.
So it's just kind of, we're keeping it the way it was, because that's what shows in the MDP right now. Is that correct?
So I will touch on that a little bit. It's in the MDP right now, it's identified as residential. So based upon some of the uses that we've talked about, we are proposing at this time that this may be an amendment to the MDP if council thinks that it's appropriate that it goes from residential to employment for the city-owned lands.
I guess my answer to that is I don't know, because we really haven't had a discussion about the pros and cons of doing anything with that land yet.
Right, and that's what the process will be for.
So when are we having a discussion about what we're going to be doing with the Badger Land? You said there's something with the CPAP, but is there actually going to be a discussion about what we're doing with this? At least for now.
That's what we're intending to do.
But at this Today?
No, not today. We want to make sure that we go out and hear from the public on the proposal first and then come back with. and then come back with a little bit more detail and get a bit more feedback from council on the direction of they would like to see these lands be.
Okay, and then the very bottom where it says other jurisdiction with the little purple. I don't know why I don't know this, but I don't, why do we have, the other jurisdiction's huge there. I can see Ray Given Drive. Is this because it's like a provincially owned park? This is the provincial park. Okay, so it's just everything else is green. It just looks so confusing. We should have had a different, that's a provincial park. So that's why that is where it is. Okay. And the purple in the bottom, they want it to be purple in the bottom? Like, is that their request or our idea? Because this is, we don't own that land.
Um, these lands are consistent with the MDP, which shows them as employment areas. But we have been hearing that they are interested in seeing those lands as residential or seeing if there's any opportunities for institutional residential uses within the employment areas, but but part of the MDP policies, we, all the employment areas does strive to support the more sustainable tax base. So we've kept it consistent with the MDP.
Okay. It just seems kind of strange that we'd have like employment lands in the middle of, middle of getting into a provincial park. Like, it seems kind of potential for intrusiveness environmentally.
Well, that's a real broad map. That's not actually where it looks in geographical maps. Looks quite a bit different. If you come off of the, the
Handate.
You come off of the, what's the road I'm looking at? Leclerc and you come in and sit and go across and you turn right to go into Lois Hall parking lot and you turn left and it'll swing around and the transportation plan has it joining on to the old 137th Avenue. So it's really not in the middle of anything. It's actually along the transportation corridor with Ray Given.
It just, it's just, it seems strange that we have a provincial park and then the next thing next to it on either side is industrial.
There would be a road separating that though.
Okay. And then when you look at the actual employment land, so we have it as mixed use in the top right corner, let's say of the employment lands. So is it like, that's where the only shops and stuff can be is there? Like, I, I'm just trying to figure out. Or like, are we not allowing sandwich shops anywhere else?
That's generally what we're proposing. There will be some conversations about can you have a shop and a warehouse attached to it through the employment land? So that's part of the conversations we're going to have with the public over the next few weeks. But yes, there is concern about having different types of I guess chat traffic generation. So for more of the retail, more of the residential type traffic, we are trying to keep it to one area. And then the southern portion would be more for big rigs and commercial style traffic. So that's part of the reason. There's some other components within that as well, but at a high level, that's where we're, that's what we're thinking.
I just, I feel like it would be better if we were a bit more flexible. Because it ma- makes everybody at the bottom basically drive to get to the top if they wanted. And the bulk of this will be servicing the people that live right around there or work right around there. So I just, just, I don't know if I'll be there for the feedback. I don't try to interfere with other people's public thing, but I'll just say, I think that having more flexibility and allowing both sides of that for the railway, because there might be people that actually want that railway tie on the north end and we're totally allowing on the south end. It could actually just create more problems than we're trying to solve. That's a little question. Thanks.
Um, I have a quick one too. So when does, when do we see the transportation network? Is that at the neighborhood structure plan or is that the ASP?
Um, at the ASP, we see the connectors across towns and neighborhood roads. Local roads would be, let's go to the map. So we see more of a conceptual road network for the ASP level, but in terms of local roads and trail, we'll see those at the neighborhood plan stage. So here we see
So Tracy, when I'm, when I'm looking at the, what do you call it, the future concepts, I'm, I was looking for the connection of Leclerc down to, to the residential areas in Edmonton. You know, that, that Ken just referenced. You know how Leclerc extends? Yeah, but that's, that, that's, seems like it's a pretty major arterial road that is gonna be feeding the entire area. So it's just missing on this map. So that's what I was wondering, but you have it classified as local?
Uh, we have it classified consistent with the transportation master plan. As a neighborhood road is what we have it identified here.
We just need to make sure that road gets built. So, who, you got another one, Ken? Go ahead.
Yeah, no, and then basically it goes back what we heard and when we, our internal kind of conversations and there was just a comment and this from land use. And I, I'm just curious as it, it just, there's just no background for me, but it just says it's on page thirteen of what we heard. It's the city should, should not shoulder all the responsibility of dedicating municipal reserve and infrastructure for the entire project area. I, I don't, I need some context for that comment.
I can provide that. What we're basically saying is, is consistent with how we do area structure plans everywhere is that the city is a major landowner within, say, the Lakeview Business District. We're saying that we shouldn't be the only ones that provide the 10% dedication requirement for the area structure plan. That if we, that every landowner will have to provide their fair share of the MR dedication, whether it's inland or cash inland.
Okay, yeah, no, that, that makes sense to me now. I, it was just kind of orphaned out there on its own and then it didn't have any of the context, so.
We're just trying to be as clear as possible to all of the people involved in the ASP area.
Good, thank you.
Mike, when do you want to talk about the absorption of industrial land in St. Albert? Here or during the MDP conversation? Cause obviously there's landowners that would like to see that dark purple go to commercial or the hatch purple along Ray Given. And then we've got other people, you know, worried about how much industrial we're putting in the annex lands. I was, when do you wanna answer questions about your predictions on the absorption of industrial land?
I mean, I can speak to it at a high level. I don't know necessarily how, we don't do predictions. I think the, I think there's been some, some research that's been done. I think the, what we're trying to suggest from our department is that what we've seen over the, the past fifty years in terms of growth and development in industrial in St. Albert is very different than what we've seen in the last five years. And what we're hearing from, like, we always look to the real estate experts, right? The, the commercial brokers are the ones that are part of every transaction or just part of every transaction. So we really look to them to give us that data to say, here's, here's what's, what's, what's being purchased and being sold. And so when we see reports and articles and data from them saying there is a huge push for warehousing, distribution, light manufacturing within the Edmonton region due to a number of factors, due to the, the connections that we have here, but also the rising costs on the coast. We need more land available within the Edmonton region. We're looking to them going, okay, these, these are the experts in our field. They're collecting the data. This is what they're, they're saying. We should be listening. And, and looking at seizing, you know, an opportunity that is, that we haven't seen in, in a long time.
And if I may, Mayor, I would also say that for EMRB specifically, say, it's a bit of a chicken and egg discussion, but available serviced land enables the attraction as well. So it's not solely a case if you build it, they will come, but if you build it, they're more likely to be, to come.
And maybe it's a bigger question for the MDP and the annex lands, but Edmonton Global for sure. You know, when Chris was here. At the forward slash, at the shareholders meeting ahead of time. And even John Liston was speaking to Rotary, like there's, they see the one disadvantage that St. Albert has is we don't have enough industrial service land, so. Cause I know we're gonna continue to get pressure to, to rezone that strip along Ray Given.
I, I don't have the data with me, but we did go through at a high level and look at some of the industrial development in the last four years. And we, we looked at Quadreals at the Ende Business Park and how much they've developed over the last five, six years and you know, close to a hundred acres and it's crazy. And they've got two buildings, two new buildings under construction, starting construction on. So I mean, we're not seeing that pace slow and certainly large firms like Quadreal.
Awesome. All right. Did you want to make the motion?
I would. I recommend that standing committee of the whole recommends that council accept his information, the agenda report entitled St. Albert West Area Structure Plan Update.
All right. You wanted to make the motion. You have something to say to it?
Well, only that, this is an update and I appreciate the, the the information that administration brought forward to council, gave us an opportunity to ask questions and I suspect it'll be an ongoing work in progress and we'll get more updates as time goes on until we actually get a a chance to pass it. So that's my comment.
All right. Anyone else? Right, call for the vote? Policies unanimous? Yep. Okay, it's lunchtime. They bring it in? I got an email from Christine, so they're bringing it at noon. So it's two minutes. Lunchtime.
Take a break till twelve thirty?
Uh, Shelley, why don't we come back at three thirty? Does that sound good? Twelve thirty.
Long lunch.
There's a loglitch. Okay, thank you, Kyle and Scott.
Twelve thirty it is.
Minsky with us? She's there, hi. Okay, before we get, so is Vicky doing the presentation? Hi, Vicky.
Hi, good afternoon. Yeah, I'm doing it in ten and with Mr. Walker.
Okay, but before we do that, I do have two registered speakers to speak on the MDP. Both from Nichols Applied Management. I have Pierce Schuch and Holly Haley Campbell. Are they with us? Pierce there?
Yep, they're both on here.
Hi, Pierce.
I'm here as well.
All right, so you guys, are you both speaking separately?
I know Pierce will likely just be speaking.
Okay, Pierce, it is your turn, so go ahead.
Apologies, I thought for spoke, morning, good afternoon, everyone. We had initially intended to make ourselves available to answer any questions about the report we submitted. If you'd like, I can make a brief presentation.
Well, you you registered to speak, so if you want to, you absolutely can.
Certainly. Let me close the door so you don't hear my children shrieking in the background, and I will make a brief presentation.
Generally, we keep it to around five minutes.
Certainly. Let me see, do I have the ability to share a screen?
Seeing nods, we should.
So I have to interrupt, I'm just getting a message. The report that's about to be discussed is not in the public domain. So this discussion should probably occur in camera.
Was it?
Yeah.
I don't remember. I don't think it was.
Christina, you sent the message, you want to expand on that?
Yeah, I just, it's for, I'm gonna ask David to maybe just step into this. We did receive a report from the proponent and the supportive consultants to counsel back in the summer. And administration has seen that report as well. However, that wasn't the report, well, it was, we discussed it a little bit at the last public hearing. The actual report wasn't completed, and that was submitted in the summer. So that report will be attached to the public hearing in November. So I'm not sure how that impacts how we discuss these things. I'll just.
So Christina, council has not seen their report.
Um, yeah, I don't know, I just know we are forward to counsel. It's coming as part of the public hearing package in November.
Okay, and, uh, but I think, I mean, you got the email from David Bromley. That they assumed it was attached to today's agenda. I think maybe Pierce, you thought so as well, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct, we received an email indicating it had been provided to council. If that's not the case, you know, perhaps, actually, I'm not sure what I should.
But we're gonna work this out, so it'll be part of a public hearing, so why can't we talk about it today? We're talking about the MDP publicly.
I'm gonna, I'll defer to Mr. LaFleur regarding how this works. I just know that it hasn't been attached to a public, we haven't seen in a public forum.
And the other thing is, we have the gist of it from when we had presenters, I don't know, months ago, when we talked. So we've, it's been public already, their opinion, so I don't know, I'll let you weigh in, David.
Okay, so based on what I've heard, in my opinion, you can't discuss it today. Can't, you can't make any decisions, well, you wouldn't be today anyway, right? Or on the, on the content of the report until it comes to the public hearing. And also, from what I've heard, there is now a commitment that it will, am I correct? Christina, this will come to the public?
Yeah, if, um, speaking with ledge services, it's already attached in the, in the Granicus.
Granicus, okay, so, so under those circumstances, yes, you don't need to worry about, worry about talking about the content of it. But on that understanding that, you know, no decisions made on that till you see the actual document in the context of a public hearing. So that should be fine.
Okay.
And I'm saying that because this is, this is about, this is not a report that affects a person's individual rights over property. That would be a different matter, as I've said many times before. And I know it's hard to get around, but it, because it's the MDP, with that understanding, yeah, the discussion can proceed.
Thank you, David. All right, so Pierce, with that, during your presentation, you should know that we have not seen the report. So it's a good thing you are giving your presentation because we can't ask you questions on something we haven't seen. Although, was it just sent to you and I? Yeah, so David Bromley did send some highlights of the report to Counselor Broadhead and I, which I will share now with, might as well. It should have gone to all of you. All right, so go ahead, Pierce.
Thanks very much, everyone. I should say, just looking back to our records, we received confirmation that the study had been shared with council in July of 2022. I'm not sure if that helps anyone going back and just double checking things, but I'll leave that with you folks. I did prepare a brief presentation, it was prepared with the assumption that folks are familiar with the study. So it is at a fairly high level, but feel free to ask any questions, I might help to clarify. I'll, I'll do my best to, to add the detail where appropriate. I'm gonna start sharing a screen now.
I can see it, it looks good.
Excellent. So the report that we prepared and shared with the city is with respect to the Cran's lands. You can see outlined on the slide in front of you there in red. And if we zoom in a little bit, we can see that Cran's effect owns two pieces of land, the green area, which is the Avenue area. And the Cran's lands west and orange there, which are the subject of our, our report. We initially made a presentation back in May regarding the MDP amendment that had the subject lands designated as employment lands. And we believe that there, or we undertook a study to examine whether or not those lands may be more appropriate suited to other uses. Is, and Mr. Krantz does have a desire to see those lands designated as neighborhood. So the report that we prepared had a single objective, and that was to analyze the market for non-residential lands. And to be indeterminate if a shift in land use designation of the Cran's lands to allow for residential development. It's consistent with the future market conditions, as we see them as well as related city documents. And the three city documents that we referenced in our work are the city MDP, so flourish. A 2021 market study commissioned by the city, led by a group called FBM. You see the title listed there, so that again is a different third party report. As well as the 2020 growth management studies submitted as a appendix D to the city's annexation application. Which really underpins the rationale for annexing the lands and designate, designating them as they are currently being contemplated in the MDP amendment. To provide some context with respect to the non-res land absorption in the city, we started by looking at historical rates of non-residential land development. Between, we looked at the 1970 and 2019 period. Over that period, we see the city absorbing about 5.5 hectares of non-res land annually, three of which are commercial, two and a half were industrial. We also focused on the 2010 to 2019 period, it is a high growth era for the city. During which it absorbed about 6.8 hectares of non-res land annually with about a 50/50 split between commercial and industrial. Now, if we look at the historic data and what other fun, other studies have found, we see the MD, pardon me, the FBM study estimated absorption going forward of non-residential land. Over the next decade would average about 3.4 hectares annually, again, split evenly between commercial and industrial. The growth study departs from the historic data and the FBM forecast considerably and estimates that non-residential land absorption will average about 19 hectares per year, 3.7 of which is commercial and 15.3 of which is industrial. Now, that rate of absorption is largely underpinned by a municipal policy objective, which I trust everyone is familiar with, of achieving a 60/40 split. Residential, non-residential in municipal tax revenue in newly developed lands within the city annexation area. Now, we completed our own piece of analysis, which, you know, into the mechanics, which I'd be happy to discuss, but certainly can't be done in the five minutes that we have here. And the figure we arrived at showed future land absorption over the next 50 years. Estimated to be 4.6 hectares per year, with about 2.2 being commercial, 2.4 being industrial. The historical data and the three studies I referenced are just, the rates of land absorption in them are shown on the screen here. You can see the 1970, 2019 period, the 2010 to 2019 period, then the FBM study and the Nichols study is the first four bars generally within the same range. And then you see the non-residential land absorption rates from the annexation study is the far right bar. Where you have commercial absorption is generally in line with historic trends and considerable industrial land absorption. Which brings you to the 19 hectares per year. We view that the, the rate of land absorption that would be required in order to achieve the 60/40 objective as being quite optimistic. And by extension, we believe that there is a considerable amount of industrial land available to the city in the annexation area to satisfy future demand. And that the lands Mr. Krantz is interested in developing for residential purposes can likely be repurposed without any material impact to the city. Achieving its 60, or moving towards a 60/40 objective. There are additional land use planning considerations that suggest that the Cran's lands may be better suited to residential development. You know, we consulted and worked with planners in the preparation of our study, and so I'm gonna do my best planner impersonation. At the moment, when I, I know that the lands are located immediately west of the Avenue lands, east of Carrot Creek, and are designated as neighborhood. That are designated as neighborhood in the MDP, the lands border Carrot Creek, which is designated open space corridor. Which certainly makes a nice adjacent use for residential. And the Red Willow Park Trail West connects along Carrot Creek. And may be more appealing to the users through residential areas compared to a non-residential one. In sum, as I indicated earlier, we believe that redesignating the lands to residential is better aligned with the anticipated market conditions. And the site-specific land use planning considerations I just outlined. Now, related to this issue and related to one of the attachments, administration has been the agenda today, I believe it's attachment seven. There's some difference between assessment and tax revenue. I'm not sure how to tell if I'm at my five minutes, but I'm gonna carry on down this road until someone asks me to stop.
Just get, get to this part about the tax assessment versus tax revenue.
Certainly. The growth study, in brief, the growth study determines an amount of land appropriate for annexation and the designation of those lands as employment based on a tax revenue target. Not a tax assessment target. There's a typo in the growth study, as far as we can tell, that causes confusion in this regard. As you can see on this page or in this slide, pardon me, section 6.6 of the growth study. Very, very clearly, the growth study aims at achieving a tax revenue split, not a tax assessment split. That's page 53, if anyone would like to, from the reference. This is important because the growth study itself, again, contrary to attachment seven, that administration provides notes, a one-to-one relationship between tax revenue and land area. And on that basis, the growth study suggests that the lands be designated 60/40 in the annexation area. If the, if a change is made to focus on tax assessment, as I believe is, is going to be suggested. You will overshoot the tax revenue target that was used to justify the annexation lands and their designation initially. It also makes for a very different financial target, the municipality. You have a bigger hill to climb if you're shifting assessment percentages than if you're shifting revenue percentages. So I, I'd humbly suggest that perhaps administration revisit the 70/30 target if it's in fact with respect to assessment and not revenue. I'd be happy to go into more detail, I could put some folks asleep if we want assessment and taxation. I'll perhaps pause there.
Okay, I'll ask a quick question, so where do, where do you think the typo is in the growth management study?
Yes, in the growth management study, I'll actually pull it up here.
Okay. And we'll, we'll ask our staff that as well.
I trust everyone can see my screen. So this is section 6.6 of the growth study. You can see the underline here, the author notes a tax assessment perspective, 85/15 split. I've just highlighted. I've just highlighted it, they move then on to the next sentence, they say tax revenue perspective is 80/20. And then they say the city aspires to achieve a tax revenue split of 60/40 across future growth areas. They then go on, and I believe mistakenly in the second to last line down here, reference tax assessment split. And then switch back to tax revenue split here on the following page. I believe that's where some of the confusion is coming from. And I would note that shifting from revenue to investment has the effect of changing precisely how much land you need and affects indeed whether or not, you know, a shift such as the one Mr. Krantz is interested in has material impact at all.
Alright, I think we will, we'll follow up with that with our staff for sure. So, anyone else have questions?
Natalie, go ahead.
Make a comment. We did receive it on the 20th, but the, the message says that it would be included in a public hearing, so I, I did not read it because I wanted it to be applicable to whatever discussion.
Yeah, but we did get it on July 20th, council had it and I perused it, but that was in July, so sorry that it didn't get attached to today's package. Any other questions?
I'll ask.
Go ahead, yeah.
Thank you for your presentation. It's Ken Mackay here. I appreciate it and I appreciate you not going into further detail on, we just had, we just had chili for lunch and that really would have created a problem with the head nods. But I guess going into your modeling and your, your identification, do you, how do you factor in? I mean, you, you certainly talked about historical and the fact that, you know, I mean, we, we basically had built out our two business parks, so our available industrial land really wasn't there. So now we've got this, this third, fourth business park being developed. Now, how do, how do you build in potential changes that also takes in available land, but also looks at the market going forward? Does your model capture that, or are you just looking at historical?
No, we go through a fairly detailed forward-looking exercise. I'll provide the calls notes. So when we model growth, we model two distinct components, the natural rate of population growth, so folks being born and passing away. We do that using mortality and fertility rate rates collected from Alberta Health. And on top of that, we layer an economic or labor force model, where we explicitly model the growth in industries. And as those industries grow, they create a demand for labor. If there is in fact labor within the city able to satisfy that labor need, there's nothing happens. If there's a shortage of labor, we have in migration into the city. If the reverse is true, then you would see out migration. And that happens at an industry level. We also recognizing the city of St. Albert is, is a city in a greater metropolitan area. We adjust for commuting patterns, so using special data from stats can, we adjust for folks who may live in St. Albert and work outside in certain industries or vice versa, so that we're appropriately allocating land for growth that actually occurs on St. Albert soil as opposed to as employees, folks who live in St. Albert. So there's a fairly detailed piece of analysis on the, on the demand side there in terms of how we expect the city and the region to grow.
So it does capture the fact that a lot, maybe the businesses that are going to be built there and attract, don't actually, the residents actually don't live in our community. They could live outside of the re, region, they could live in other municipalities bordering us. I mean, does it capture? It doesn't specifically identify that it's a St. Albert resident working in a St. Albert business, but it's a business that could attract residents or places or, or employees from other parts of the region.
That's right. We do account for people commuting into and out of the city to satisfy certain types of jobs, because of course, not all employment types, not all economic growth of all types would take place in the city or elsewhere in the region. And so our analysis is sensitive to that. And then the way we turn that into a demand for land is we look at employment intensity, so we can use variety of data sources to understand, say, how many commercial, how many, let's say, you know, retail jobs take place on a net hectare of land used for retail purposes. And then as we get the employment growth in our economic model, we can assign land consumption to those figures.
So how do you account for outliers, like, let's say, like an Amazon moving in and saying, okay, we've got, you know, 500,000 square feet on each level and we're gonna bring in X number of employees. I mean, I, I just picked Amazon because they're an Atchison right now, and I mean, it's all robotics. In reality, there's not a lot of people, but how, how do you account for some, for scale of, of what it is rather than that direct ratio?
We don't explicitly model kind of very unique or one-off investments like that. We do calibrate our work to historic activity and when you do have a chance to look at our, our report, you'll be able to go in and look, I believe it's figure 4.3 and 4.4. We actually have annotated graphics of land being absorbed in the city going back to the seventies, and you see things like St. Albert City Mall, Village Street Mall, Walmart in 20, or 2001, and Costco in 2013 appearing as those big drivers of land consumption. So our model and calibration is the fact that we live in a world where those big things happen. But we don't explicitly model unique opportunities going forward.
Alright, thank you for, appreciate it.
Any other questions? That's for Maskey, you're good. Alright, thank you Pierce. You might want to stick around because I'm sure we might have some follow-up questions for our staff. So we'll now go to you, Vicky, for a presentation.
Thanks. Good afternoon. I did, I did have good morning, but I had to change it after the lunch. So I'm Vicky Dodge, I'm the project manager for the annexation file, and I am joined today by my colleague Craig Walker from Planning, who's been working on the amendment for the municipal development plan. We are here today because at the public hearing in May of this year, council had asked us to bring back some more detailed rationale behind the proposed MDP amendments. So that's specifically what we've prepared in our report today. So we are prepared to speak to the rationale behind the amendments, but we're not prepared to speak to any of the public hearings submissions from May 16th. So those responses will be prepared and available in the November public hearing that Christina referred to. Also supporting us today during our Q and A session on questions related to taxation and assessment, because we plan our folks are not the experts on this. We have Diane McMarty and Stephen Betterman from Financial Services. Okay, Craig, next slide please. Thank you. So let's start by clarifying the differences in scope between the municipal development plan and the annexation. So you'll recall that Flourish, the MDP, is meant to be a document to guide community development over the next 25 to 30 years and plans for a population of 100,000 people within the pre-annexation boundary of the city. And then in contrast, the annexation sought to secure land supply for up to 50 years. This is beyond the scope of the current municipal development plan. In, in a way that would provide the land supply that would accommodate that population beyond 100,000 and also to have that land be searched in a, in a cost-effective way, in a sustainable sort of way for the city. Okay, let's go with the background. We had the annexation was affected on January 1st of this year, and that triggered these municipal development plan amendments. We had first reading given to the proposed MDP amendments in January 31st of this year. March 25th, the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board's approval came in for the proposed amendments. We had that come in without any contest from any of the other region municipalities. And on May 16th, we had that public hearing where we were directed to bring back to committee of the whole the additional rationale details for these municipal development plan amendments. So before we get right into the meat of the matter, we wanted to just quickly recall how the annexation process has led us to this point today. So first, the annexation was supported by extensive engagement activities with the landowners, with stakeholders and the public. The growth management study was developed out of rigorous technical analyses that were kept separate from the political negotiation process. The general land use allocation map that you see here formed part of that annexation application, which council endorsed prior to it being submitted, submitted to the province for consideration. So second, this land use allocation map represents a snapshot in time, as did all of the technical analyses for the annexation. The purpose of that technical analysis was to support annexation, not necessarily meant to be etched in stone to support all planning processes in the future, but it was a starting point for considering the amendments to the municipal development plan letter before you. And finally, it's important to clarify that the, this, these MDP amendments, they had their own engagement process that was separate from the annexation process. So some of the feedback that we received from those MDP engagement sessions were reflective in some of the proposed amendments, but Mr. Walker is going to get into some more detail about those engagement sessions and then carry on to the, the map amendments and the rationale for those. So I'm gonna turn over to Mr. Walker now.
Thank you, Ms. Dodge, and good afternoon, council. I also just updated my slide to read good afternoon as opposed to good morning. I want to start just by saying, Madam Mayor, there's gonna be a lot of material to digest this afternoon, so before I jump in, maybe I'd just like to start with a spoiler alert and just provide her two key messages upfront, so you can keep them in mind as I go through the presentation. So on that note, the first key point we're gonna try and make today is that although a lot of analysis has gone into the proposed MDP maps and policies, many of these detailed matters aren't too critical to fully resolve right now in finite detail. The maps shown in the MDP are conceptual and aspiratory, not meant to be binding nor site-specific. So in the future, when new information becomes available, or if and when it's desired to significantly deviate from these high-level concepts, we can indeed do so via MDP amendments. Longer term, by the bulk, by the time the bulk of the annexation lines are actually feasible for urban development, we anticipate we'll need a brand-new MDP anyway, which is common for most municipalities every decade or so. So that's the first point we're gonna make as we go through the slides. The second point pertains to the financial terminology. We know there's some confusion about this. These terms are incorrectly thrown around interchangeably at times. But what we're going to try and communicate today is that regardless of which term council lands upon, whichever term you choose to use within the MDP and whichever number you decide to use within the MDP, none of these terms used alone is the silver bullet that we need. And accordingly, administration is gonna propose to report annually on both of these measures as well, just, just to muddy the waters a little bit more, an additional term as well, so that you can get the bigger picture to assist in future decisions. So now that I've, you know, spoiled the presentation, let's get to the presentation and I'll, I'll kinda, I'll kinda go through my slides now. So as Vicky mentioned, the growth management study, Madam Mayor, wasn't intended to be binding. It had recommended that the future land use designations and the road network concept be further refined by additional studies, stakeholder inputs and that type of stuff. And so to that end, keeping in mind that the growth management study was prepared back in 2010, administration held an internal design charrette in September of 2021 to reconfirm things. That exercise was primarily informed by the growth management study and then tweaked based upon more recent annexation discussions, feedback from various stakeholders prevailing known developer interests which had emerged since 2020 and so forth. So after tweaking that growth management study map, administration then initiated a series of public engagement opportunities listed here. So they included landowner notifications by mail. There was a, a kind of an exclusive landowner-only open house, just to get that focused commentary, as well as a broader open house, open to the wider public, a presentation to the Chamber of Commerce and then some of our other various means, like cultivate the conversation and so forth. And when all was said and done, the outcome was proposed map three shown here on the right. I've also taken initiative just to draw on the boundary to map three, just so you can kind of get a better idea what, what we're speaking to with respect to the annexation lens. So in the slides of, in the slides ahead, we're gonna slow down and explain this in more detail. So again, there's, there's gonna be a lot to unpack today, and we'll be happy to return to any of these slides during the Q and A afterwards. But first, on the next slide, I'm going to start by comparing the growth management study to our proposed version of map three. Although this is meant to be an exhaustive before and after-type explanation, what I'm gonna try and illustrate here, council, is the near mirroring of the council-endorsed version of the growth management study on the left with administrations and the public refine version of proposed map three on the right. So just walking through a few of the high points, and again, we can come back to this later on. If there's anything in particular you'd like more information on. But maybe first, I'll just start by drawing your attention to the far northwest corner, and we'll kind of go around this in a clockwise manner. And what I want to point out here, again, you see in the growth management study, this large area of purple being employment lands and a fairly similar purple in the group, in proposed map three on the right as well. The growth management study had contemplated a mixed use node somewhere in this neck of the woods. Whereas in this version, you can see administration has taken initiative just to slide that down a little bit to better correlate to the location of where a transportation branch anticipates a east-west arterial or collector road would likely to be needed. It also moves it right off the border with their neighbor Sturgeon County and just provides a bit more of a buffer to some of the agricultural uses just north of the boundary. In addition, you can see the growth management study had a proposed node roughly here. Whereas we've just centered it right on that intersection, allowing for more flexibility, more innovation in the future, rather than this version, which kind of implied that it would be a little farther to the east and north of that intersection. We've just shifted it right to the middle. Continuing on with some of the highlights, if we move a little bit more to the right. Again, you can see the growth management study had contemplated this yellow representing neighborhood. Likewise, in proposed map three, it also is mostly comprised of this yellow or beige in our version. The growth management study had proposed one node in this general neck of the woods. We do indeed have that, but also took initiative to add another one here. Again, the rationale being to take advantage of these intersections of future north-south and east-west collector or arterial roads. Continuing to the right, on the far north side of the city, again, the growth management study closely mirrored on proposed map three. You do see that the growth management study had anticipated a smaller proportion of neighborhood in yellow. In this map, the neighborhood expands a little bit more to the west, and that was based on a more recent developer concept that emerged since this study, of course, pertaining to the northeast area structure plan, which is still in progress. Moving a little farther to the right, this here is mirrored pretty much verbatim. You can see neighborhood in, in yellow here, and again, neighborhood here. Open space down here in, in the, primarily in the floodplain of the Sturgeon River. Also matched here with open space. And then lastly, continuing south of the river, you can see the growth management study had envisioned this all as open space and I, I believe this was institutional. Similarly, we have open space and we just designated all of it as alternative jurisdiction, seeing that it's all owned by the government of Alberta at this point. So again, that's not meant to be an exhaustive list at this point. But what I'll do now is move on to the next slide with a little more detail. So what we would do, Madam Mayor, is refer members of council to attachment four for more of the details. And in that attachment, we have spelled out in detail these 14 key features that we believe you would want to be aware of. This is really, as Vicky put it, the, the meat of the matter that council had asked for back in May. Again, I won't go through all 14 of them now, but just to demonstrate. Again, I won't go through all fourteen of them now, but just to demonstrate how this attachment for works, let's say you're wondering. You know, what was the planning branch thinking with, um, you know, when they colored the map purple for areas one, two, three and six? So i- if you were to go to that attachment for, to paraphrase. It would point out that these are employment areas consistent with the growth management study. As well as councils assessment split goals. Again, I recognize we're going to come back in a few slides and talk about assessment split and and tax revenue split. You'll also see that it depicts, uh, what we believe to be a conceptual, uh, a logical conceptual road network. Um, keeping in mind things like railway crossings, um, avoiding unnecessary creek crossings. Um, keeping the road network within our own boundaries a- as much as possible. It also considers synergies with regional infrastructure, for example, Ray Given Drive. Uh, the future development ambitions for the Vilnav Airport further to the west. Um, speaking of Vilnav Airport, there's also the Vilnav Highway, Highway six thirty-three. As well as the, uh, CN Rail, uh, Sanguido Spur Line, uh, running through this area here. Likewise, if you're wondering, uh, what was the planning branch thinking, you know, with this road labeled as number five? Uh, well, if you go to appendix four, what it would say is that this is a conceptual location of what our transportation branch believes. Uh, should be the location for a future collector or arterial road due to the limited intersections on Ray Given Drive. So just to clarify, in the future, the transportation master plan, as well as the Edmonton Metropolitan. Uh, transportation master plan envisions Ray Given Drive would be extended in a northerly manner. Uh, conceptually as shown here. So because this is really higher speed. Limited intersections, we've just put kind of a placeholder, w- w- we will need a road with slower speeds, providing more. Access opportunities somewhere between Ray Given and Carrot Creek. So attachment four goes into those types of matters in more detail for all fourteen of these matters here. Okay, um, similarly, this next slide shows a before and after of proposed map four. Again, you can see I've put in the, um, former municipal boundary just to help set the stage a little bit more. So as Ms. Dodge pointed out in a previous slide, the pre-annexation boundaries. Can already accommodate the city's population growth to a hundred thousand over the next twenty-five to thirty years. So by the time urban development and costly infrastructure is actually viable within the bulk. Of the newly acquired annexation lens, almost certainly, Madam Mayor, a brand new MDP will be in effect. So in our view, it's not too critical to get all the land use designations or roads perfectly detailed this far in advance. And to reflect that reality, proposed map four aims to demonstrate the anticipated phasing and priorities for development. So in addition to changing some of the colors to to make the map a bit more intuitive. Okay, intuitive, at least for for planner folk, um, this map proposes to, uh, do the following. So first of all, you can see here in blue, this is unchanged. Uh, this continues to demonstrate infill and intensification primarily along Saint Albert Trail. Likewise. These areas here are also unchanged in the before and after. This continues to indicate that the main priority for outward greenfield growth is westerly. Um, highlighted in orange, same as shown in the existing MDP. Uh, moving up to the northeast part of the city, uh, this is essentially unchanged, uh, it's just expanded. So in in the existing, uh, map four, um. It it essentially implies that the area can accommodate growth, but for various reasons, it's not quite as efficient to develop. As the orange areas, uh, so this area here in map four has essentially just been expanded north of it and east of it. Um, based upon that same designation within your existing MDP. As for the pink, this is the bulk, uh, majority of the annexation lands, and these are beyond the near. To medium term time horizon for development and are reserved as a future urban growth area. Again, um, we'd be happy to come back to the slide or any of the others a bit later during the Q and A. So a few other considerations for why we sort of painted the map that the colors that we painted it. Um, it is intended to be a living, breathing document. Uh, the municipal government act legislation and various practices broadly imply that these documents are are not intended to be set in stone. Uh, but rather, as part of a healthy and transparent planning process, the MDP should be considered to future amendments, uh, whenever warranted. So this could be due to things like changing priorities, uh, changing demographics, market conditions. Uh, new policy direction at the city, at the regional, maybe the provincial levels. And so forth. So it's not meant to be kind of one and done, and then we never touch it again. And then the interim, the maps demonstrate general intent. And will aid in guiding various city decisions based upon the best available information today. When there's better information available tomorrow, council can amend these maps. And when the information changes more significantly into the future, we'll likely just recommend a brand new MDP. Again, as I mentioned, common, uh, every decade or so anyway. So that was an overview of the maps. In addition, there were some proposed text amendments. Uh, so before I get to this next slide, I'll just warn you, I'm not going to read it because it's a lot of text. Uh, this is really just for for transparency. Uh, this slide here is really just informational text. Um, it's not a policy. Um, in section thirteen point one, which is our part of the MDP that talks about outward growth. This little informational, uh, text blurb, if you like, really just provides context for the annexation. Uh, this type of commentary is common throughout the MDP and is not a policy. So that's one bit of text, um. We're proposing to add. Uh, speaking of policies, there are three new policies, um, proposed to be incorporated into the MDP's sustainable growth section. So to paraphrase them, uh, they pertain to pursuing an even more ambitious non-residential target within the annexation area. Uh, that's in order to offset the lower proportion of non-residential uses elsewhere in the city. Again, I know that term assessment split comes up, we're going to talk about that in a few slides. Another policy we are proposing, um, just gives kind of a nod to map four, uh, regarding the phasing that we just spoke about. And the last policy, uh, in response to some of the feedback we got from. Uh, former Sturgeon County residents, this just acknowledges that agricultural activities are going to be around for a while. Likewise, due to those new policies. Is there's also a couple of new, uh, definitions we're proposing to add into the glossary. Uh, one for the north annexation area and one to define the alternate jurisdiction that pertains to the Riverlot fifty-six and Poundmaker Lands. So thus far, we've highlighted the general planning rationale for the annexation area. Uh, during the public hearing, uh, and we just heard about that this, uh, from our last speaker. Uh, a more nuanced discussion arose regarding some of the financial terminology. So during the public engagement stage, the Chamber of Commerce proposed a grammatical change to an existing policy. Uh, thirteen one six as shown here. So basically, uh, replace the term tax revenue with assessment split. Although it was never the city's intent, the chamber's fear was a potential perception that the business community might be the target of disproportionate mill rate increases. In order to achieve that goal. In understanding the chambers concerns, administration opted to propose changing that existing term. And along that same train of thought, we opted to use that same term assessment split in one of the new proposed policies. Uh, again, this, this is the policy just discussed a couple of slides ago, where based on that input from the Chamber of Commerce. We also, um, took initiative to recommend the term assessment split, um, correctly or incorrectly, Madam Mayor. This was just based on on the feedback received. So as picked up on by the chamber and as is now evident to all of us, although seemingly an insignificant wordsmithing matter. The terms assessment split and tax revenue split are not interchangeable and are used by municipalities to measure different things. Each of which has pros and cons in setting municipal targets. So I'm not the finance expert, we do have them on the call to help with the questions afterwards, but to to paraphrase. I could define the tax revenue split very simply as measuring the proportion of tax revenue. Acquired from all developments categorized as either residential or non-residential, just a very simple definition. Um, of course, it's informed primarily by mill rates which are established annually by council. The assessment split measures the proportion of assessed value of all developments categorized as either residential or non-residential. And a few noteworthy comments here. It's generally not impacted by the mill rate, so whether the mill rates are up or down, they're high or low. Um, if something is, you know, if a house is categorized as, um, or or rather, excuse me, if it's assessed at, say, half a million dollars. It's always going to be half a million dollars regardless of what council does with the mill rate. More significantly though. Um, although I realize our previous speaker had a a slightly different opinion. It, as a generalization, there is a correlation with the amount of land, um, sometimes the density actually assigned for such uses. It's not a black or white equation, but generally, we know that if eighty acres is is assigned for this use or that use. We we kind of know generally speaking what the assessment, um, i- is roughly going to be. But the 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 issue, the tricky bit, is that it does fluctuate with market conditions. Um, look no farther than the example of downtown Calgary right now, that has roughly a twenty-five percent vacancy rate. So although the amount of commercial land hasn't necessarily changed there, you bet the assessed value has gone down. So just trying to paint the picture that tax revenue split and assessment split. Used in isolation doesn't provide counsel, um, with the the complete picture. So. On that note, I I'm pleased to take this opportunity to to further complicate things and introduce another term for you, uh, the absorbed land split. So this measures the proportion of the area, so in hectares and acres of land assigned for those same uses. Because until land is actually developed and assessable, zoned land doesn't actually bring any revenue. Uh, for example, you could look at some of the undeveloped parts of Kingswood, uh, Pineview, uh, Stage Two. Um, some of our municipal neighbors, for example, have, uh, arguably overzan- overzoned lands for heavy industrial uses. Or or country residential uses in another circumstance. But if those lands, regardless of zoning, i- if they still sit as, uh, farmland. There is no assessment, and if there's no assessment, there's no tax revenue. So i- it's a complicated, um. It's a complicated piece of the puzzle. So our conclusion is that ultimately, regardless of the terms used. What council are saying, what the MDP is saying is that the goal is ultimately to reduce the reliance on residential taxes. By increasing the supply broadly of non-residential development. To increase the supply of non-residential development, we need the land, we need the assessment, and then you get the tax revenue. So it's really a combination of all three. And so the council has that bigger picture. Regardless of the terminology used within the MDP, our commitment is to report annually on all three of these measures. To ensure that council has the complete picture. Again, there's not one silver bullet, you need all three, uh, bullets, if you will. So the next steps, Madam Mayor, so a week from now, at the October seventeenth council meeting, uh, you're going to see, uh. Uh, an agenda item in there, uh, that reads that a new public hearing be scheduled for November the seventh. And at that point, we really feel there are two options. Uh, option one, our our recommended option would be the council gives second and third readings as presented. The outcomes from this would be that it satisfies MGA legislation in a timely manner. Of course, section six thirty-two of MGA states that a municipal development plan must address the future land uses within the municipality. And by approving it sooner rather than later, um, you satisfy that law, that legislation sooner rather than later. It provides certainty to some of the affected parties, uh, both internally and externally. It would help support the completion of various in-progress endeavors like the transportation master plan. The off-site levy bylaw, the Saint Albert West area structure plan, which my colleague Tracy just spoke to, uh, before lunch. Um, as well as the northeast area structure plan. Of course, if we approve it as presented, uh, it may very well indeed necessitate future MDP amendments when new information becomes known. But that's a given anyway, whether we approve it immediately or whether we make some changes in the future. It's always wise to amend statutory plans as new and better information, uh, becomes known. Option two, rather than approve, uh, second and third reading. Council could indeed direct us to, uh, take it back and make some changes. Um, that may necessitate a new Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board approval, depending on the magnitude of the changes. A new public hearing would then be required, uh, by that stage realistically, especially if the MRB is involved, that would push things back to twenty twenty-three. At that point, council could give second and third readings. The outcomes of that, um, uh, on the the positive side, it would help refine administrations assumptions within the MDP. In accordance with council's direction. But it wouldn't satisfy the MGA legislation in a timely manner. It would delay providing certainty to the affected parties that I had mentioned. Uh, it may, uh, or may not necessitate new MRB approval. Um, again, if if we're talking about changing a term from assessment split to tax revenue split or or vice versa, okay, that's one thing. Um, but if it was significant mapping changes that could impact regional infrastructure or an adjacent municipality. Uh, that may very well trigger, uh, the ref process through the MRB. It would also delay the completion of some of the in-progress endeavors that I mentioned in the previous slide. It may introduce new costs to revise some of the in-progress work. For example, if we had to redo, uh, maybe a traffic impact assessment. Uh, revise the financial impact assessment assumptions. And it may also in- impact staff capacities currently working on other priority projects. So I know that's a lot to digest, councilors, uh, we trust this overview, which really just paraphrases and even more detailed reports shed sunlight. Into why administration came up with the maps and policies that we did. In summary, our two key points again are that firstly, a lot of analysis that's gone into the proposed MDP maps and policies. Were based primarily upon the growth management study, and then they were tweaked. Um, we attempted to communicate today that many of these detailed matters aren't too critical to fully resolve now. When new information becomes available in the future, or if it's desire to significantly deviate from these high level concepts. We can do so via MDP amendments. And Madam Mary, I I say it's noteworthy to just to remember that not all MDP amendments necessarily trigger an MRB decision. It it would depend on the scale, uh, does it impact regional infrastructure or not, and and similar factors. Longer term, uh, I also mentioned that by the time the bulk of the annexation lines are actually feasible financially. For urban development, we anticipate we'll need a brand new MDP anyway. And then the second point, uh, regarding the financial terminology. Um, simply put, the MDP's goal is to reduce the reliance on residential taxes by increasing the supply of non-residential development. And that requires land, then you get the assessment, then you get the tax revenue. So regardless of which term and which numbers council desire to use within the MDP. Administration proposes to report annually on all three of these key, uh, performance indicators. So that you can get the bigger picture to assist in future decisions. Uh, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'm going to have a much-needed sip of water now and I'll turn it over to you.
No, it was awesome, Craig. It was, um, they're really good presentation and, uh, your joke about what were they thinking, um. Was exactly my question in May. It's because we didn't get this much of a detailed, especially with the numbers on the map. And the corresponding thought processes around it. I think that's all, and I think it was probably myself that was questioning it the most during that May sixteenth. I think that's all, and I think it was probably myself that was questioning it the most during that May sixteenth um meeting.
I did too.
Yeah, okay, just so this is what I wanted. I don't really have a lot of more questions. Maybe a couple and we'll get to them, but can we just go quickly? And I don't know who's gonna answer this. To the pres- the presentation, I just want to ask, they were talking about a typo in the, not in in our MDP, but in the growth management study. Section six point six, were you guys following along with that?
Um, Madam Mayor, we we were, um, and I would, uh, if Stephen or Diana are still on the call. Um, I would probably defer those financial questions to them as they are the uh subject matter experts on on. That terminology and all of their implications.
The other thing, Craig, just to add is we will also follow up with ISL, who wrote the report, just make sure. About that clarification, but Stephen, if you've got something to add, please do.
Yes, unfortunately, I haven't read the ISL reporter, haven't had an opportunity to see that report. I can tell you that a number of times, um, the seventy-thirty split. Between the assessment base and the taxation split has been um. Has been bantered around, and I think it's the numbers that have caused confusion over the last few years. The the overall goal of the city is the seventy-thirty tax split. Um, the assessment base changing to that seventy-thirty would actually. Increase that tax base to approximately oh fifty-seven percent residential and forty-three percent. Non-residential in the tax split. So it's a positive, but I'd have to review that report. I don't have the details.
Okay, we'll just maybe at the public hearing, we'll get that answered, but that's probably good enough for me. I think we were always talking about assessment split right before I was elected, and then it was much more advantageous to call it tax split. Cause we reached the eighty-twenty with the tax splits, right? So. We changed our vernacular then. Um. Any questions? Cause I can keep going, guys. Alright, um. Can you bring up the, uh, I guess maybe the growth management study picture again? For us, it's on page one thirty. Thanks, Craig. So, and thank you for doing the side-by-side. That was awesome. So I wish you were in the room, cause I could run up to the screen and point, but. The south, can I use your pointer? Well, they won't be able to see that, will they?
No.
No, okay, so.
Craig, you can use your mouse.
The, just to the right of your oval, um, at the south, there's a little piece of commercial, red blotch. Oh, up outside of the oval, right there. Yeah, oh, that's Sean. That was Sean's. Outside of the oval.
In the yellow.
In, yeah, just in the south side of the residential area.
It's north of where it says.
North.
Higher, Craig, a little higher.
Go to the east.
Right.
That is commercial, but it's not in the um. In the uh post-MDPs. I'm just wondering, cause I didn't see any explanation for removing that little. Which could be a very positive chunk of commercial along there.
Uh, so Madam Mayor, um, let me just. Okay, so um. I, what I had tried to communicate here was um, pu- put simply, that. Piece of commercial has i- if you like, converted into a mixed-use node, which implies. Residential, retail, commercial, um, i- in in that exact same location. Uh, given the proposed alignment uh for Fowler Way. Um, in addition, we've also split that up into two mixed-use uh residential, commercial nodes. So it hasn't. Disappeared per se. It's it's um, it's divided and it's it's morphed into. Uh, mixed-use nodes, which would be further determined at future area structure plan. Processes and and Vicky and Christina, Adrian, feel free to jump in as well if there's anything further to.
I'll just jump in to say it's it's hard to see on this map, and so maybe that's one of the issues. There is a little pink. Uh, circle, sunburst is what we call them, um, where that commercial. Um, square is on the map. You just can't see it because we've got the dashing over top of it.
Okay, I can see it in our document, and you're right, it just, it looks so much smaller compared to the big red chunk in the growth study.
We're we're trying to provide that flexibility. We don't know the exact extent of these things at this stage, at the uh MDP. And and that's what the next stages of the area structure plan are are there to provide us.
Okay, and so do you guys imagine um the commercial corridor extending to the north there? Cause it doesn't look like it does, but I. I feel like the commercial corridor along St. Albert Trail has been. Successful, and it's it's commercial in the gross management, but it's industrial or sorry, employment.
Yep, yeah. Um, so it's important to remember that there's a changing nature of the corridor. Commercial area that is being proposed within the municipal development plan. Um, where that area is for a higher intensity mixed use um in fill component. This area, um, as we've got it identified. Um, the areas north of the existing commercial corridor as employment, which will have um percentages assigned to. Retail, commercial, and perhaps um, light industrial as well. Uh, we've received some comments back from some of the developers that they'd like. More um opportunities for different types of employment, so that's why it's it's all purple. In that area, um, and that's also why we've got that little purple star by burst in the map as well. So it's it's not to say, it's just, it's just to remember over the next twenty-five years, we're actually hoping to really intensify the. Um, trail, and that's a little different from the greenfield north of it.
Okay, so good. So there's retail potential along there?
Yes, I would, yes, I would suggest there would be, but that would be for the refined area structure plan.
Okay. Another question about the alternative jurisdiction. Uh, Craig, we just had the area structure plan conversation for St. Albert West. And they had all of Lois's uh provincial park as alternative jurisdiction, and so I'm just wondering if we want to maybe align. That area structure plan with the MDP. Cause you've got it as major open space.
Do you want me to take a shot at that?
Please do, uh, Ms. Peter.
Uh, so, again, try to remember the timelines of this. Um, this came first to council in May. Um, and we've started to use this jurisdiction a little bit more since. Um, there is an opportunity. When we bring forward the St. Albert West area structure plan, that we amend the MDP map to reflect that alternative jurisdiction. And and what we tried to do was not make too many changes to the foundational map and really stick to. Um, the annexation area with this proposed map three. It's been a few little tweaks here and there, but. Uh, we figured that that was quite a a major one, so point noted um and taken there and. I would suggest we agree that there's an opportunity for that uh, that shading and coloring to be identified in other areas of the city.
Alrighty then, ahead of myself then.
That was a good catch.
Wes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um. Thank you for your presentation, uh, Mr. Walker. That was uh. Always very good, and I appreciate all of the presentations today. Just a question, you you've made a a note. In in your sort of closing comments that 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 the map. Provides certainty to the landowners. And and we have a proponent here that has issue with a color assigned to the land that he owned. And they suggest that perhaps a different color should be assigned. And yet, uh, the MDP, as we're talking today, is for the, basically for the pre-annex lands. And the colors that are in dispute are in the post-annex lands. Uh, can you explain to me if if the NDP, there will be a new NDP later on? Why does the color matter today?
Thank you for that uh question, Councilor Broadhead. Um, so if I go to. The proposed map for, so the, the lands in question today, uh, that that we just heard about with the previous uh. Uh, speaker, they fall roughly in this area here. Please do correct me if I'm wrong, somebody, but. Uh, they are, th- th- so they they are in this area here, which is designated future urban growth area. And that's just in recognition that there is a lot of land uh in this area and this area. As well as the infrastructure. Before this is even ready to be viable for development, just to avoid that leapfrogging. And the maintenance of infrastructure and so on and so forth i- in the interim. In other words, you don't want to develop out here. Until it's contiguous with what's in here. So it is a future urban growth area. We. Probably will uh revisit all the assumptions at that time in the future, whether that's a decade or two or three uh from now. In the interim, based on the best available information, based on the growth management study, based on. Technical analyses from professionals across a diverse spectrum of disciplines, Councilor Broadhead, we we've assigned. Um, what you can see here, that this purple, this employment uh for consistency with. Um, all of the synergies going on, so. It's it's um, it's a bit of chicken and egg. We've assigned this for a future urban growth area, and we will revisit it in the future. In the interim, to support some of the ongoing planning, it's important to assign. Something in the interim, and based on all that we know, uh, based on council's um, uh, desire to. See additional employment lens come online, we have. Taken our best stab based on the best available information today to paint as much uh purple on the map, so to speak, as possible. This land here, again, you you can't predict thirty years out necessarily, but based upon our best. Gestimates. It certainly seems uh desirable and logical to have this entire area here painted purple. Again, Christina, Vicky, Adrian, feel free to supplement, but I believe that captures um the rationale for why it's purple.
Yeah, and 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 also just a little bit, a little bit more nuanced is that when we were looking at the annexation growth management plan. What we did see was the correlation to, um, and Craig mentioned this in his presentation between land. Um, the amount of land to the amount of a assessed value, and so this is. Right now, we've got approximately um forty percent of the landmass in the annexation area identified for. Um, employment uses, and then that in theory, um, and obviously things change, as Craig has mentioned. Um, you know, these these numbers can change over time, and we'll see how that works out, but right now the correlation is. Um, if it's forty percent of the landmass, that's going to get you forty percent of your assessed value. And you're and correspondingly, um, same, similar numbers to your tax revenue.
Yeah, perhaps it wasn't clear. Uh, I I got that. Why is that important to the landowner today if it's not going to be developed for thirty years?
They may um think they may be able to develop in a more timely fashion than that. Um, it it, it's something that, how do, you know, we enable a process for an amendment. Um, and they would be providing all of the supportive documentation for their case. So one of those. Um, studies would be the market assessment as discussed by. Um, the consultants from Nichols, but there are additional um studies that we would use to um. Evaluate to see if we got it right or not. Um, but you would have to ask the. The proponents specifically why they would like to have that done.
So I'm just wondering, like, why we're assuming thirty years? Because. You know, you got Rohit developing right now, we've serviced Crossway Gibbon. Is it easy to service from? Avenue lands over to that section on the other side of Carrot Creek? And I I get all the reasons, but there is, there is an argument to be made that Carrot Creek. Should have maybe residences on both sides just for the attractiveness of it and keeping it. Yeah, so just wondering about the servicing over to that side of the creek.
So the other side, so the other side of the creek, based upon what we learned with the annexation area, and I'd like to get some. Probably a little bit more help here from engineering, but that's a new servicing area. Um, and would require significant investment to get the servicing across. Very similar in the discussions that we're having regarding servicing the northeast and the um, all of the west. Um, there's also an argument um that Carrot Creek can also be a buffer between different types of. Um, development, um, and as we discussed before, on the other side of Carrot Creek, we'd also anticipate that there'd be roughly a fifty-meter buffer. Um, as well. So there's ways that we can mitigate some of the land use concerns because of Carrot Creek. But a lot of it is due to the servicing and the cost of bringing the infrastructure over. I think it would be quite difficult for one developer to bring over the needed servicing at this time.
Ask another one more. So I know you, are you done?
Yes.
Okay, Stephen, um, I kind of following Wes's thinking. If it's, is, does the zoning, whether it's purple or yellow on a highly conceptual MDP map. Change the assessed value of that land? Like if you're gonna sell it.
It potentially could affect the market value of the land, depending on the, the supply and demand. So we're talking. Well into the future, but the supply and demand for residential, commer- excuse me, commercial or. Or industrial lands could affect any future zoning, but until the actual. The zoning is in place in the future years, that's what would really affect it, but it'd be highly speculative to say today that. Industrial, commercial lands on the west side of Carrot Creek would um. Affect the market value substantially right now with uh MDP is at this stage.
Alright, thanks. Anyone else have questions?
Oh, a comment. A comment, I I just want.
Maybe, go ahead, yeah.
No, a comment and and Mr. Walker, that was a fantastic presentation. I I I appreciated it right from the get-go. You uh, you re- you you hit it all uh, the areas in your, your presentation style was. Uh, was very good, so I would just wanted to make sure you, you received that comment that you might not get into big. And everybody else too, I appreciate, but Craig, you you did a lot, so.
Appreciate those words. Thank you.
I like the graphics. Yeah, they're good. Yeah, alright, I am seeing uh no more questions. But we can't really pay attention to chat, Sean, sorry, that's too hard and, um, so. I need a motion.
I can put it forward if not.
Yeah, I just need to get it here first. I'm going to it.
Renee's gonna jump in, there you go.
That, there we go.
Help?
Yeah, that helps things.
Do you want to pick your font?
Oh, that's cruel. Okay, that the standing committee of the whole recommended council that the agenda report entitled Municipal Development Plan First Amendment be received as information. And that council schedule a new public hearing for the municipal development plan, first amendment in quarter four twenty twenty-two.
Alright, stop that, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't have a lot uh to say in any comments other than what I said initially. The report was very good. I think it. I I identified some of the timelines that we're looking at and identified that the um. Uh, what the general intent of the MDP is at this particular uh. Uh, stage of the process we're at, and it also shows some uh willingness on behalf of administration to look at. Uh, providing additional information as to assessment split, tax revenue split, or the the third one. As well, um, so, um, I don't really have anything more than that, Madam Mayor. I just. Uh, this just moves the process further.
Yep.
For uh, forward, pardon me.
Are we gonna set, um, David, are we gonna set that public hearing today at agenda planning?
It was already on the slide there.
Was there a date? Cause it's.
Yeah, you can, you can send it as agenda planning, but council will still have to make a motion to to do it.
Yeah, that's.
On the seventeenth and seven November.
On the seventeenth and seven November was recommended.
Means the advertising will have to go in like literally on the nineteenth.
Right, yeah, we talked about that.
We know today what you want to have happen.
Just, okay, you're good. No, I was going to say, should we put a date in there, but it doesn't.
No, we're going to have it here.
Doesn't matter. Go ahead. I'm glad we had this delay and we had this explanation. So it was not. Fruitless. I think that if we hadn't had this explanation, it would be much more difficult just to approve it as is. So having an understanding of. Where you're going and why you did what you did and those. Exactly what we think, what are you thinking over and over again, that just helps us feel more comfortable with where we are more. I don't necessarily agree with every color in the map, but I'm not going to make a big deal about every color in the map.
I'd just like to say, great presentation. I think it could set a model for future presentations where you have. A map with numbers on it and then a direct correlation to the to the key. Explanations that that could be a model for future presentations when it's something like this, that it's. It's very easy to follow and you have, you know, number one, and you can. Look down on the list and say, that's what they were thinking. And so I I found that personally very helpful, very clear. And will be easy to look back on as as well and say, hey, now I remember what they were thinking. So. Thank you. I need all the help remembering I can get. Thank you for that.
I like the side by side, Greg. It's always good to have side by side and.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and and maybe I'll just say as well, there's been a lot of thanks to me. I want to just acknowledge my colleagues as well and. There's been a small army in the background refining this map and we've arm wrestle back and forth and what to show and how to best communicate it. So. I just want to extend that kudos to the entire planning team.
Appreciate you doing that. That's that's great. This is. We're probably not going to make any changes. I'm not even sure. Do you have a comment?
No, she knows. She's ready to go.
This is. This is generational work that this council has been tasked with doing, right? Setting. These annexation lands and I wanted to make sure we had everything we needed to to understand it, so. It'll be fine. I'm pretty sure at the at the public hearing, et cetera, and then the hard work will start about. Thing gets built out and we'll all be gone by the time it's done, but.
Well, I plan on being here when I'm hundred and ten. We'll meet up much later.
Those are good.
No, nothing at all. Thank.
All right, that passes. We're done. Adjourned, meeting adjourned.